All right. Welcome, everyone, to the June 17th Special Meeting of the Sustainability Commission. Meetings are broadcast live on Glendale TV, viewable on Spectrum Cable, Channel 6, and AT&amp;T U-verse, Channel 99. Meetings are also streamed live on HD on the city webpage, glendaleca.gov/live, on youtube.com/miclendale, and on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, iOS, and Android devices using a free app called Cablecast and choosing Glendale TV from the menu. Meetings are also archived on the city website for viewing anytime at glendaleca.gov/Agendas. Call 818-548-4013 for program schedules. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. Public comments on a specific agenda item will be taken when that agenda item is discussed. If you have any questions about matters on the agenda or requests for assistance, please contact the city clerk at 818-548-2090 during regular business hours. All right. What's next?
Item one, roll call. Commissioner Bartussev.
Here.
Commissioner Werner. Commissioner Pinkerton.
Here.
Fastra Cartunian.
Here.
Chairperson Bazemore.
Here.
Ex officio Welch.
Here.
Ex officio Espenjian.
Here.
Item one A, Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, please join me. Thank you. I have an, please, what's next?
Item one B, Land Acknowledgement.
All right, so we would like to acknowledge that we are holding this meeting in the city of Glendale on Tov Agnar, the home of the, excuse me, the home and traditional lands of the Gabarialino Tongva people. We'd like to pay our respects to the elders, both past and present, and the Gabarialino Tongva communities who continue to be stewards of this land. Glendale's history did not start with colonialism. Indigenous communities have lived in this area and been stewards of this land for hundreds of years and numerous generations. The Gabarialino Tongva communities and culture continues to grow and flourish. We encourage our audience to learn more about the Gabarialino Tongva tribe and the many indigenous communities in California and beyond. To get started, you can find a list of books and resources at glendalelac.org/nativeamerican. Thank you, what's next?
Item one C, Reports Regarding Posting of the Agenda. The agenda for the June 17, 2024, meeting of the Sustainability Commission was posted June 4, 2024, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Now it's item two A, Approval of Minutes, approval of the minutes of the Commission regular meeting held April 4, 2024.
Okay, do we have any comments or motions to approve the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
So I think we take these separately, is that right? So is this for April 4th or March 6th? Yes, or can we do them together? Let's do them together.
Yes, I move to approve the April 4th and March 6th minutes. Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bartussev.
Yes.
Commissioner Werner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinkerton.
Yes.
Fastra Cartunian.
Yes.
Chair Bazemore.
Okay, next.
Item three, All Communications. Discussion is limited to items within the restriction of the Sustainability Commission. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Sustainability Commission members may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The matter may be referred to staff for investigation and report. We have no callers, and it looks like our line is not working. So if we have callers later on, we can admit them if we choose to.
Okay, so there's potentially someone looking into that?
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Of course.
All right. What's next?
Item four, Board Member Staff Comments.
Okay, any comments from the Commission?
I have a few. One I wanted to pass along came from some members of the public. I don't know if we can quantify this easily, but they were wondering the estimated cost for the Earth Day event, and also wondering if part or all of those funds in future years could be applied to actual physical projects. I know, I think, I recall David saying you've applied for grant funds to take out the turf here at City Hall and replace it with zera escaping, so that was one of the points and comments I heard, is, is it possible to do that? Or even, you know, maybe just budget for a project like that, that would take place during Earth Month, if not on Earth Day? And also to follow up on that continuation of that, could we also have projects where we develop partnerships with community organizations? Like we've got Roses, which I believe are fairly water-intensive in behind the City Hall, could we dig those up, donate them, you know, partner with GEC, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, to plant zera escaping, to go with a zera scape plan out there, so that type of thing? Litter cleanups was another idea. So that was it, thank you.
Any more comments? No? All right, David, please.
Good evening, Chair Bazemore and members of the Sustainability Commission. So I have two things tonight. As you know, the next Commission meeting falls July 4th, so the proposed date is to have that meeting July 8th. Just want to make sure that that is suitable for all the Commissioners, and if so, we'll have to do another special meeting for July 8th. Be a 5:30 start time in the chambers.
Thank you, and as I understand it, we are constrained somewhat by Glendale TV's availability, is that right? So is this really the best option or the only option we have around then, or?
July is the best option.
Really the best for July, so that's another Monday?
Yep.
Well, I think unless there's any comments from folks, I mean, do we take this as an action, or do we just?
We'll just set it up for July 8th, yep.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. And Chairperson Bazemore, so the second thing I'd like to introduce is quite an exciting event. I'd like to introduce a gentleman by the name of Ben Marshall. And Ben is a fellow from the Environmental Defense Foundation, and Ben is going to be with us for 10 weeks, working on quite an exciting project related to the cap, and the words are hard for me to say, it's participatory budgeting, so it's get the community involved in the budgeting process around the cap. So I'd like to invite Mr. Marshall to come up and introduce himself, and just talk a little bit about the project, and take any comments. He will be coming back to the August Commission meeting to present his findings on his project. So, Mr. Marshall, please.
Thank you, David, and thank you Chair Bazemore and the rest of the members of the Sustainability Commission. I really appreciate being able to introduce myself to you today. First of all, I thank you to David and Nora, the rest of the members of the Sustainability Office, the management team, and everybody at the town who has made me feel so welcome and allowed me to hit the ground running on this project. As we move forward, I'm very excited to be working for the city of Glendale this summer. Next slide, please, Nora. Briefly about me, who I am. My name is Ben Marshall, as David said. I'm an Impact MBA student at Colorado State University. What an Impact MBA is, is actually leveraging sustainability in business, not only carbon management, which as you can see, I am getting a certificate in, which is greenhouse gas accounting and sustainability accounting, but also social sustainability and how equity concerns do play into the sustainability of business as well. My background, I actually was a graduate of Colorado State University originally, about 15 years ago, graduated during the recession, so I fled to the mountains in Colorado and have kind of never looked back. So I started in tourism, ski tourism, property management, and I was also briefly a road and mountain bike guide, so we really see the effects of climate change in that area. It helped leverage why I went back to school. I did pivot away from that for my career about seven, eight years ago into working for the people that live and work in Telluride, Colorado, where I live, really trying to benefit the community there. So I moved into the nonprofit sector, specifically in health-based nonprofit, I think like Public Health Light, where I was running about seven different programs in mental and behavioral health across age groups. Then I also did work for our local government, our Parks and Recreation Department, running all of our youth and adult programs and facilities. So as I said, kind of the full wraparound of my experience made me want to come back to school to work on climate-related concerns, and I'm very appreciative to get the opportunity to do that here in Glendale. As David said, I am an Environmental Defense Fund Fellow, and what the Environmental Defense Fund is, they leverage Climate Corps, which matches graduate students with municipalities, organizations, private firms, public firms, that have specific climate-related projects that they want investigated in over a summer fellowship. So I do get school credit for this as well. But now while I'm actually here, if you want to go to the next slide, about the project itself. So what is participatory budgeting? Some of you may have experienced in this already, but I'll quote directly from the Participatory Budgeting Project, which is a nonprofit that helps leverage these different frameworks. So participatory budgeting is a democratic process in which community members decide how to spend part of a public budget. It gives people real power over real money. And really what we are wanting to look into here to see if this process would be something that Glendale would like to pursue, if we can do it in an equitable fashion for climate-related projects. So it falls in line really well with the proposed cap at this point, and actually, as you'll be discussing, I'll quote one of those, SG 5.1, so it's actually kind of baked into that if that language is adopted, so kind of a win there that we're already looking into it with me as part of that cap process. So why is it worth investigating? It gives participatory, excuse me, opportunities for all, specifically historically underrepresented or marginalized communities, as well as youth members who might not be able to vote in a traditional election. And then you also do have your traditional voting box as well, so it becomes holistic. And the aim is to make it an equitable process for everyone who is, quote-unquote, "citizen of the community," and that's all-encompassing, is people who live and work in the community, not just those who are registered to vote, so to speak. It builds trust in the governmental processes, specifically in local government representatives, but the democratic process as a whole. Short-term successes can lead to long-term engagement in the community and a real beneficial back-and-forth. And then it leads to idea generation. Really, it can go from the boardroom or Commission meetings down to the community and back, or from a bottom-up level. There's a variety of frameworks of how this could work, hence why I'm investigating what other municipalities have done, and how that could be hybridized kind of for Glendale. There is no one-size-fits-all to a lot of these processes. So how does this really work? There are a lot of existing frameworks, there's a lot of historical data, it started in about 1989, in Brazil, actually, as kind of the framework for that, but it's been incorporated all over the world. And then also utilizing the proposed cap, the vulnerability assessment that came with it, and really engaging internal and external stakeholders, community-based organizations, and in all manner to kind of holistically build kind of a pillar and a framework there for this process as it would move forward, and see if it's something that would fit into not only the budget, but something that would be effective for the city of Glendale. And that is all I have as far as the introduction. I'm happy to take any questions, though, and I appreciate you all letting me introduce
Well, thank you so much. We're glad to have you. It sounds like, as you pointed out, you're going to be working right here on SG 5.1, or something of that nature related to that. What, if I may ask, is, because it seems like such a short turnaround, this short timeline that you have with us here, I think August was mentioned as the date for your report, I guess, what is the, I guess, the ultimate deliverable? If you could describe that again for me, just like, is it a framework, or it's a white paper? I mean, what is it?
Yeah, we're looking, we have a work plan kind of built in that is a living document, so depending on what we kind of, as we move forward, investigating everything here within the office, but really what we're looking at as of today for the deliverable would be to create kind of a framework that could be pursued for kind of a long-term process. So what seemed to be the best methodologies to pursue participatory budgeting process, and try to identify best practices, the stakeholders, where, you know, using these vulnerability assessments, where certain community-based organizations that can be leveraged are located, how to best engage underrepresented segments of the community, and then also how to leverage potentially the cap to pull out these climate-related projects, and then filter those down based on feasibility, budget constraints, and what the community would like to see out of all of that for kind of a first step moving forward into a potentially long-term participatory budgeting process. So it will encompass an overall report at the end there, too. I'm looking at it almost as a potential thesis at this point, depending on how in-depth we can get with it, because it can go a lot of directions, for sure.
Any other comments from folks? Yeah, well, sound.
Welcome.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. All right, what is next?
Next is item five, Action Items, 5A Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, Draft Measures and Actions. We have a presentation.
So Chairperson Bazemore and the Sustainability Commission, we're very excited to be at this point and bring the climate action, the draft measures of the Climate Action Adaptation Plan to you today. This is an opportunity for you to review the measures, to provide feedback to us and to the consultants in terms of asking questions about some of the measures, looking at some of the priorities, and giving us your feedback and input into those, too. This is the final kind of steps where we're getting input. We've done a lot of stakeholder outreach over the last 15 months, first for the initial measures, and then these draft measures, too. So the community has given us a lot of feedback and given us a lot of input, we're very grateful for the community involvement in that. We've also had staff impact, staff involvement in providing us feedback into the capabilities of the different departments to be able to work on these measures. We still are having departmental meetings with the consultants on that as well. But yeah, no, today's an exciting day. Today's the day for Rincon Consultants, so Hannah Mize and Ryan Gardner from Rincon, who've been the project managers on this project for us, are going to present today. They have a short presentation, but after the presentation, it's over to you, for you to ask questions of us and the consultants, and for us to respond, and take notes, and give that feedback to the consultants. So with that, I would like to ask Hannah and Ryan to take it away, please.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it, as David mentioned, really excited about today and kind of where we are at in the process. There's been a lot of engagement so far, and we'll touch on that. Before I jump in, it looks like we can see my screen, you guys are good, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Yes.
Wonderful. All right. So we're gonna, there we are. So the meeting objectives today, for today are really to gather feedback. As David mentioned, we have worked on the draft measures and actions. Essentially, the measures, how we have them constructed, are goals to do X by Y year, so electrify new buildings by, you know, 2025 or something in that vein. And then, once, you know, if there's any questions on that, we want to hear from the team, we want to help kind of identify any pathways for hurdles, or if there's any concerns and suggestions. So full, open discussion, would really love to hear what you think, and we can kind of talk about how we got here before we jump into that a little bit more in-depth. So the rule today, again, we have provided the draft measures and actions, we're looking for input. If you have any questions, we're happy to hear those, and again, concerns. We have through the end of this week, if you have additional feedback, I know sometimes I do my best thinking, you know, as I'm driving home or walking my dogs, and if those items come up for folks, please don't hesitate. We are really excited about this opportunity to make sure it's the best plan for the city, so if there are things that come up after today's meeting, please don't hesitate, we'll collect things through the end of the week, and if there's concerns on that timeline, let us know. The reason we have that bracketed is so we can kind of, once we have those measures finalized, start to implement and develop some funding strategies, build on the next steps, and start to track and monitor progress, so.
Sorry, Hannah, I don't mean to interrupt, apologies. The slides aren't changing, are in, so Nora will get the slides up, and then you can just ask us to move to the next.
Okay.
If that works for you.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm gonna just click Stop Sharing then, here. That's very strange, because it was popping through on this end. All right, we have David with the Girl Scouts, big win. And we are on, I think, two more slides forward. This guy here, oh, sorry, Sequel Qualified. All right, so really wanted to just touch base on kind of the pros and, you know, the identification of a qualified cap. Nora, if you can go back one slide, that would be awesome. And I can just speak to it while we're getting there. So essentially, to have a Sequel Qualified Climate Action Plan, there are a couple of requirements as outlined in the Sequel Guidelines 15183.5B. Essentially, there's a requirement to have a greenhouse gas emissions, either a baseline or a kind of a status in time, so we have that as part of the emissions inventory. We have to forecast emissions and set a target that aligns with the state, also included as part of that kind of forecasting piece that we did at the forefront of this process. And then, once you kind of get those foundational pieces, the real, the crux of this is the, you know, the ability to streamline environmental review, which allows, you know, saving money at the city level, but also saving time in a way that aligns all kind of future development projects with the Climate Action Plan and the city's goals. So there's a couple of requirements to get there, we really wanted to just align the expectations of what a qualified climate action plan is, and one of the reasons why this plan in particular includes some pretty ambitious goals, and it's to align with the state's overarching goal of reducing emissions 40% below 1990 levels by 2030, and that, again, is a requirement of the Sequel Qualified Climate Action Plan or Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, as this document will end up being, to integrate both of those kind of components. So as part of this, we'll provide a mechanism to track and monitor goals, and some substantial evidence that documents how the specific measures and actions included in the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan will reach those goals. When you're looking at the goals, you might see, hey, you know, why did we choose, you know, a specific percentage or a specific year? And when we're thinking about those items, really, the, you know, the crux of it is to make sure we're helping the city reach the goals in line with the state. So to use that document as a qualified plan to really provide kind of a pathway to streamline analysis, and this is something that jurisdictions throughout the region have done, Pasadena, South Pasadena, and others, so lots of Burbank as well, a lot of others have kind of had this qualified plan, the goals just are a little bit more ambitious than a non-qualified, traditional, kind of older climate action plan. Next slide, please. All right. So as far as the process goes, today, we're at the state where we have refined the measures. We have completed emissions analysis, as mentioned, that's the inventory, the target setting, and the forecasting. We also did some analysis on climate action kind of impacts from the, from the climate change that will be impacting, or that we'll be experiencing, and what that will look like, so we can essentially start to identify solutions and pathways to adapt to climate change and become more resilient. So we have that included in the Climate Action and Adaptation Vulnerability Assessment, kind of as the baseline foundation for this. And then, we took all of that analysis, took it out to the community, shared that out to kind of get an understanding of the baseline, so folks have a starting point to kind of come to the conversation with an understanding of where the emissions are generated, you know, the impacts of future climate change, and also help ground-truth that with the lived experiences of the community. So from there, we developed these preliminary measures and actions, again, goals to achieve X by Y year, and the actions essentially tell the story of how to get there. So each of the actions, we've really tried to identify pathways for structural change, feasibility, funding mechanisms, essentially all of the kind of hurdles that come up as we're implementing things, we start to build that into the action framework as we're developing that. Today, we're going to share the refined measures, and then essentially go through the draft plan, sequel analysis, and then final plan and adoption. And as David mentioned, throughout this process, we've had a ton of engagement and feedback, so if we go to the next slide, we can speak to that. Really, I just want to say, this has been, as far as our projects, one of the more exciting ones with community engagement, it's just been an absolute kind of foundation of this plan. There's been over 20 community engagement pop-ups, pop-up events, and those have occurred throughout the city, both, you know, meetings and actual events, either at farmers' markets or Starbucks coffee shops, stuff like that, allowing the city to go out to where the community already is, and getting people kind of invested and involved and informed, so that's been really exciting. We also hosted two open house climate cafes, so at that was really a cool kind of opportunity where community members were invited to learn about the Climate Action Plan and other projects that the city's working on related to climate and sustainability. There's also a mending workshop and a knife sharpening, so really just providing kind of like opportunities for the community to meet together, utilize our resources, and learn about kind of opportunities that we can implement working forward and going together to reduce the greatest impacts of climate change. We also have three focus group meetings, which throughout the process, again, providing kind of contextual information throughout, starting off at the introduction, draft measures, and then refining those. Recently, at the beginning of this month, Go Glendale hosted a really cool urban art walk, where they discussed kind of the Climate Action Plan and ideas for implementing different measures that started at City Hall and then ended at the Americana, and that was just a really neat opportunity, again, to meet people where they are. It was something that the Go Glendale team thought of, and essentially the city just provided the funding to do the implementation of it. So another way to kind of bring that community feedback and integration into the project from the forefront, really just an awesome example of what's been done here. All right, goodbye the numbers. This one's kind of cool, so as part of this process, we worked with a really cool kind of equity and engagement firm that created, I would say, Robust and Large In-Person kind of activities where folks could engage. Again, these were at Earth Days and pop-ups and the workshops that we had, and what this example that we're seeing here on the top, folks could essentially identify, you know, specific measures that they're interested in, and hurdles, and kind of identify the solutions or the areas of interest that they would need to start to implement those measures. And so in total, over 43 comments were received, and 440 strings were kind of used on this pop-up, those connection points, people really getting involved and providing input on what they need to start to implement these items. There's also a Climate Action Plan survey, where we received a few responses, I'm not sure, definitely received more than two responses, I apologize about that, I'm not sure what that is, but we also have engaged over 850 folks as part of this. And so again, that's in-person, virtually, that's at pop-up events, and all sorts of kind of different engagement folk I, so people could really identify a path that worked best for them to get engaged with the Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, provide feedback, and make sure this is an implementable plan for the entire community. That's something that we're all, you know, excited about as we move forward. All right, I think this is what we were looking to do on that last one, so I apologize. 67% of the cap survey. Um, respondents are new to the public planning process. And so to me, I think that is one of the biggest. Um, kind of metrics or measurements of success where we're getting people who traditionally have not been involved in the process. At, you know, giving them a voice at the table, providing um, a mechanism and opportunity and kind of identifying those gaps that have been um. Maybe in the past that we've come across. And so this is something where we can again, utilize this in future planning processes for the city. To reach new folks and make sure we are really developing plans that are um, in alignment with the entire community that we serve. It's also um, allowed us to get some real feedback. We heard about some safety concerns related to biking and walking. And the desire for protected bike lanes. That also um, was something. Um, that we integrated into the plan to make sure that we close some streets. I, I think we've reviewed the measures and actions to kind of see that feedback integrated throughout. We also heard a lot of support for um, community composting and apartment buildings in particular. And the trickiness of having that in multifamily homes versus single-family homes and really recognizing that there's differences and providing solutions. Um, for, for all members of the community. So that was a really big part of the action requirement that we worked on. And then the idea of the fact that there's old homes in the community or homes that are already in play. And how do we electrify those, both cost and technology-wise, timing? Um, so there were some solutions in here. Where we identified um, actions to essentially have replacement programs. So people aren't without water heaters and stuff like that as transitions are made. And really provide an equitable um, pathway that to all of these kind of. All right. So now we're going to jump through an actual measure and action review. Um, no, everybody's had a chance to maybe look at the document. It's, it is lengthy, so we can kind of discuss it. Um, it's a little bit more in-depth. If we can go to the next slide, we'll talk through the systems. This climate action and adaptation plan is unique in the fact that um, traditionally, climate action and adaptation plans have been developed such that. They're really sector-based. So it's, you know, transportation, energy, water and waste, um, adaptations kind of separate. And so what we did here was really understanding this holistic process and that all of these pieces come together. So we have developed this climate action plan. In a system-based approach where instead of talking about sectors, you, we talked about mobility, land use and emergency systems. We talked about urban ecosystems. Building systems and then social and governance systems. And that's really again, to start to break those barriers down and the silos that we've traditionally seen in climate action and adaptation planning where. There's an action measure and an adaptation measure. And we both kind of have the same goals and things, you know, um, are semi-inalignment. But really identifying the areas where we can um, bring those together, coalesce the ideas and start to make solutions that are, are more impactful in the long term. Both mitigating and ad- adapting to climate change. So those are kind of how we've developed this. And then this is the framework that we have, the measures and actions in so far. You'll see the social and governance system, the building system. Again, each of these have measures underneath them. In the areas where we have these highlights, um, we're still identifying some of those areas where we need to reach um, that. You know, forty percent goal by twenty thirty. And so there's an opportunity to, you know, tweak a couple of these, adjust, you know, in a few higher or lower. And essentially wanted to talk about some of these opportunities. And as we um, start to refine. The final language, we'll populate these numbers and then share out um, the results again. So. This is again, um, social governance and building systems. And then on the next slide. Um, we have mobility and land use in urban ecosystems. And then I know these are just kind of large tables. We wanted to open it up for discussion and answer any questions that you have. Um, about the process, about the measures and actions, about the, you know, the development and kind of where we're at. And then. Before we jump into that, we'll talk really briefly about kind of the next steps of this process and then open it up for questions. One more slide. So once we um, you know, finish this meeting up today, again, we'll have up until Friday. If more time is needed. That will shift the schedule, but please let us know. We really want this plan to be. Developed for the community and reflective of what um, you know, people are looking for as a final document. Then so we'll take all the feedback, start to finalize the measures and actions, share that out. Based on again, all the feedback that we've received to date from the community, the um, the city staff that we're going to meet with through the rest of the week. And this team, and then we'll start to quantify the measures. Um, that'll be again, buttoning up those kind of percentages where we have missing numbers and identifying pathways to get to that final goal. So that will be the, you know, kind of buttoning up all of the measures, getting everything totally finalized, releasing a document for public review. And that'll be the climate action plan, which will include in addition to this measure kind of section where we'll have all of the um. The initiatives for the future years. We'll also have that foundational information, the inventory, the forecast, the targets. And the vulnerability assessment. So it's all set in one place, really in a visual manner. So it's clear. Um, and then we'll talk a little bit about the regulatory background, dive into the measures and actions in the plan. And then discuss how it'll be implemented and monitored over time. Once we get any feedback on that, you know, we'll take a, a little bit of time, a couple of weeks to button those up, integrate any feedback. Um, throughout the process again, on both the sequoia and the climate action and adaptation plan. So if there's any um, questions on that, everything will be kind of finalized, release that, and then take it to the city council for adoption. As if by the end of the year. Um, so from there, we can pause for just a second if there's any questions on the measures and actions. Um, I did have the document that I don't know if I can pull it up. But I'm happy to be still.
Thank you. Yeah, I think if we can take some time, I think. To, to go through this together, if there's any comments or questions uh, from my colleagues about the uh, measures and actions. I will turn it over to Laura wants to go first.
Uh, yes, I was a little surprised reading the report um, to see the measures like MLS one point two and MLS one point six. Related to zoning changes. Um, none of the outreach materials that we received said anything about. Changing the zoning. And I think we would have gotten different people showing up to speak about that. So it just seems like it came out of left field. And in some cases, um, competes with the, you know, already um, approved. Uh, housing elements. So, um, and I don't see how adding additional. You know, missing middle housing, which isn't defined, but I assume that that means more apartment buildings. Um, and strategic rezoning will um, improve the climate for the city when. Our adaptation plan outreach mentions that buildings account for thirty-eight percent of our, our um. Our impacts, our emissions and so on, just, and not even including the very impactful construction of those buildings. So. Um, if we're trying to make Glendale a greener, cleaner place, I don't think adding density is actually. Going to help. It's actually going to make it worse. Um, uh. A lot of, maybe you're not aware, but um, uh, Glendale has one of the highest percentages of multifamily housing in the country. Um, nationwide, it's about um, uh. Sixty-eight percent is single-family homes, but in Glendale, it's only thirty-four percent. So we're already doing more than our fair share compared to other um, cities around our size. In fact, you go, have to go to New York City to find a. A, a city that has as much um, density as, as Glendale, especially in South Glendale. So there's a lot of people that are very concerned about that. Um, we feel like our infrastructures are already very strained. We're already trying to figure out where our. Electricity is going to come from. Um, you know, we do occasionally have rolling blackouts and we're trying to get people to, uh, you know, turn off their. Or, or lower their um, air conditioners on hot days and things like that, trying to reduce the, the demand and everything. So. Um, having these zoning changes just seem very um, very strange and. And antithetical to a, a greener Glendale. So could you elaborate on where this actually originated from?
Yeah, I can take a shot at answering some of those questions. Um, you know, I think a lot of, there's a lot there. So. I'll, I'll try to hit on all those things you talked about. Um, I think first of all. A lot of what we talked about in the zoning changes was looking at. Areas where we might be able to get more diversity in the building stock. So instead of like really large squaths of say, all residential. Um, is there an opportunity to have a coffee shop there or an office space or something to kind of mix the use up? Um, when we did our tour around Glendale, um, it was interesting, like every time. We would get to a, like a really cool part of town that was Philbo Boss people, people hanging out. Um, there are always these like really neat mixed-use areas um, that had little bits of retail or, or something else. And. It kind of struck us that that really is probably the only way to actually reduce uh, the MT in a city is to. Give people an option to walk places instead of driving. Um, so that's a lot of what we talked about as far as rezoning. Um, there is some language in there around density. Um. I think one thing to keep in mind is that. We're not just looking at Glendale's emissions, right? We're, we're looking at how. For all, how Glendale kind of fits into this overall piece. So if you have someone move to a multifamily. Condo or apartment or unit um, in the city of Glendale, their emissions are significantly lower, probably a third. Compared to someone moving out into the outskirts of town or outskirts of the city or out in town incorporated county. Um, and traveling in every day. And those multifamily units also use significantly less energy. They're more efficient. Um, they're easier to heat and cool. And um, yeah, you, use less energy overall. So. I understand the sensitivities around development and density. Um, and understand there might be concerns about that. And I don't think anything that we have proposed here is uh, like a change to the character of Glendale. Um, but rather looking at where we can make improvements to make it a more, you know, walkable, livable city.
Well, something like that would have to have a very different type of outreach than what was actually advertised. So it's, it's just seemed to. Come out. In a way that wouldn't be expected. I mean, if, if we're talking about zoning, then it should have been on the outreach. Like come. Talk about upzoning and, and um, strategic upzoning and, and putting commercial uses in residential neighborhoods and all that. And. That would have gotten a lot of people worked up and who are now like completely unaware of this because they thought this was just about. You know, electrification, you know, encouraging bicycles and walking and things like that. So. I think that it's just not appropriate at all to have those kinds of measures in here without having that be. Noticed, you know, to the public. You know, the outreach would have had to include that this type of thing would be part of that. And would, and would be better handled by the Housing Commission or some other, I don't even think it's in the, the um, purview of. This group to. Decide what neighborhood should be upzoned.
I believe that our, a lot of our outreach material did have um, things especially around upzoning and adding in a mix of commercial. Into certain neighborhoods. Um, and we did get feedback on that, pretty sure. I could be wrong. It's been a lot of outreach, but I believe it was in some of our outreach materials, maybe about pop-ups.
Can you speak to that, David?
So Commissioner Basemore, um, sorry, Chairperson Basemore, Commissioner, I'm Werner. So in the initial set of outreach, when we were talking to the public. That's one of the key things that came back to us from the public. Is about the density, is about zoning, is about making Glendale more walkable. So it wasn't selected as out of thin air. It was selected because that's what the community told us was of interest to them. Um, when we went back with the draft measures for further outreach. Um, it was in the outreach materials. We had the, the, the triangle, the pyramid and everything like that. I'm talking about these different measures. So um, we feel that we did try to communicate that with the public. We could, if we, if you think we could have been better at communicating that, obviously I'll take that, um, I'll take that criticism. Um, without a doubt. We've also had um, a lot of input from planning. Um, specifically on these um, the MLS one um, systems. So, and we're going to be providing that feedback. Um, to Ringcon about the design standards, everything what would be acceptable, not acceptable in the city. Um, so, and then we are having a specific meeting with the Ringcon and the Planning Department next Monday. To review all these items in this part of the cap.
Yeah, it just seems like it's something that maybe developers have gotten hold of or something. And things like not having. Subterranean parking anymore um, for, for new developments when. Subterranean parking is actually better for the environment because, you know, surface parking lots generate a lot of heat. It's. Not a good use of scarce land and all. And it's even a lead requirement not to have surface parking. So. So to have that put in there just because, you know, developers know it's more expensive to provide subterranean parking. And so they don't want to do it. And then somehow that's made its way. You know, into these recommendations. It just um, doesn't sit well with me.
May I ask a quick question? Um, I'm wondering, Ryan, um, did you have any examples locally where you saw like these small retail stores, et cetera, that would be a good model? I know when I was looking to buy a house here, I was looking over close to the GCC campus off Adams. And I thought, great, there's a little bakery, there was a bookstore. And I thought, how nice. I won't have to walk, won't have to get in the car. So I'm wondering if you. Identified any models here in Glendale?
Yeah, let me, I remember, it might have been in that Adams zone where there's like a really cool coffee shop and like a couple of other things. Um, and like some offices and mixed with housing. And I think that was one of the cool spots that. Um, I know staff was excited to show us and like we hung out there for a little bit. And it's, yeah, it was just a great, a great vibe. Um, I think, let's see, let me make sure I get my names correct. Yeah, that one spot was Adams Square. And then I think there was another spot like further um, up the hill that also had really. Like a cool um, commercial. Like almost like outdoor mall, not the large mall, but uh, like a string of um.
Montrose? Did you go up to Montrose?
Montrose, yeah. Was the other spot that we thought was really cool and kind of had that like mixed, um, that one is a little bit more like. Commercial throughout, um, but you know, right next to a bunch of residential buildings as well. So.
Right. Thank you.
If I can just jump in, there's, there's actually numerous examples in Glendale. Kenneth Village is one that's popularly known. And. As far as I know, the nearby residents aren't complaining about their accessibility to nearby commercial activity. Um, there's a very small community market called Haikashan. Um, it's on California, just east of uh, Louise. Um, that has a store too, uh, that's directly accessible to neighboring residents. I believe there's a commercial property somewhere in Chevy Chase Canyon. Near the country club, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and then I remember seeing one. Uh, a commercial storefront or two on Adams, not in Adams Hill, but further north, like maybe near Maple or. Lomita, something like that. So there, there's plenty of examples of, of, of this type of land use in Glendale.
Yeah, they're usually in um, transitional corridors where it's multifamily housing, mostly not in R1. Because I mean, one of those is in my neighborhood. That's not R1, we're the, in Adams Square there.
Commissioner Warner, do you want to continue with your comments? Or I, I did want to just actually ask Nora. So I know. We were told that the public comment feature was not working. Is that, is there, do you have an update on that?
That is still the case. I'm trying to work it out.
Okay, okay. Well, please, please let us know. Um, in case there's anyone trying to call in. So, thank you.
Uh, I had a couple, you know, just changing the subject completely, but, but um. For the climate ac- action piece that had to do with um, high heat and they were talking about. for the climate ac- action piece that had to do with um high heat and they were talking about um helping people retrofit their homes. I think people need a, a little more detail about what that encompasses. And when you say like um retrofit, like, you know, the average homeowner doesn't know what you're talking about. Like, you know, it needs to be more specific, like, you know, converting your gas water heater to a electric heat pump. You know, swapping out your stove, you know, just, it just needs to be a little more specific and, and people need to have an idea of how achievable that is. Uh, Glendale is very, um, has older housing stock compared to other cities that were built more in the seventies. A lot of these were um built in the, you know, twenties thirties and forties. Um, my own house is turning a hundred next year. So, so, uh, you know, when we hear like retrofit, we just think dollar signs because of all the things, you know, upgrading the electrical service and things that would have to go into that. Um, but I was going to suggest, um, because, you know, we have heat waves like now, like this week, you know, high heat waves. Like just trying to do something in the interim. Uh, they have these small fans that run on U S B. And um I, I bought one during, you know, it was right after one of these heat waves. And I was, I was, okay, I still had a charge on my computer and all this. And I thought, it'd be really nice to have an electric fan. And so I bought one on Amazon. I think it was, it was less than twenty dollars, but, and then they have those chargers. You know, you could get those for probably ten or something, but um, and then they could be labeled with maybe emergency numbers to like the, the, the cooling areas to go to or some, you know, some kind of message or, or a um uh Q R code to send them to the, you know, emergency sites for cooling down. Because there are a lot of people in older buildings who either never had air conditioning in them or can't afford to run their air conditioner. And it would be nice if they had something like to get through this summer. You know, so if there's like a, you know, a grant out there, a GoFundMe or something, you know, that to help people that are going to be struggling, you know, because these are all ideas, like we could do this, we could do that. But what about people who are going to be suffering, you know, this week, you know, it's going to hit ninety something before the end of the week? So, you know, what are, what are they supposed to do in the meantime? You know, will they be around, you know, for all these other changes? So, so I just thought I'd mention that there are some kind of quick and cheap things that we could be doing in the, in the meantime that, you know, while we're working all of this out, so. Thank you.
Chairperson Bazemore, if I may make a suggestion, I think we began on mobility and land use. So I think maybe if we, with the commissioners, go through each of the systems like that. So we do mobility and land, finish that, then go to Urban Eagles, whatever you choose. But I think that'd be easier for the consultants and us to take the notes on those particular different systems each time.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, that's a great suggestion. There's, you know, sixty pages here we're looking at, so uh four distinct sections. So maybe we go section by section. Um, so that was, your suggestion was the uh section four, mobility and land, land use. If anyone else wants to take it away. Anyone?
Question to follow up on my colleague's uh comment. What was the rationale to deprioritize subterranean parking? Um, is there something that the consultants know that we don't know?
I don't think that there's any uh specific law against subterranean parking. It's just, it's broader than that. It's just parking in general, which again, I know, the only hate mail I've ever received from my position is talking about parking. And so I understand that it's a touchy subject, but again, there's, you know, we have come to expect, you know, free, easy parking uh at all times. And in order to make a transition away from driving single occupancy vehicles, one way to do that is to just reduce price, the amount of parking that is there. So when we build buildings without parking, whether that's really expensive subterranean parking, which limits oftentimes the size of the building that can go there because now we're adding significant cost um on top of building the building. We're also incenting, incentivizing people to have a car and drive everywhere. I mean, you know, like you said, Glendale was a, a pretty compact city and it was pretty dense. Um, and there's probably a lot of people who can get around fine and not have a car or have one car or have a shared car. Um, so it's not a knock against subterranean parking in any way. It's, I guess, a general knock against a lot of parking in general.
Uh, if I may, I think the language we're talking about here is uh eliminating mandatory requirement for sub- subterranean parking. So it's not getting rid of subterranean parking, it's just not requiring it on new, new buildings, is what I believe here. Uh, with the idea to not have less parking requirements for new construction so that we don't fill up our uh city with parking lots and fill it with more businesses and more things that people like actually want to use instead of just leave cars in.
Okay, thanks. Um, I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll also partially answer the question as well. Um, I think the issue with subterranean parking is the cost associated with that certain type of housing. So um with the requirement that parking has to be subterranean, you're exponentially increasing the cost of that particular uh development and thereby passing on that cost to the consumer, which is, you know, part of one of many reasons why housing is so expensive in the region. I, I, I was a little bit puzzled by the comments that we had just heard about density and, and uh multifamily housing and how that contributed, contributes to sustainability here in Glendale. I, I've never heard the comparison that Glendale is anywhere near as dense as New York City. In fact, I just quickly did a, a search and of all of the cities in uh L A County, we don't even rank. There, there's a list that shows like the, the top densest cities in L A County, and we don't even reach the top twenty-eight. So despite us being the, the fourth largest city in the county, we're nowhere near being as dense as the densest in the county, let alone places like New York City. Um, but I think this, this touches on a broader issue about uh greenhouse gas emissions and what it means to live in denser communities and how that type of land use uh allows for a reduction in G H Gs. So if you take a look at census information um from the most recent census, you'll see in the parts of the city that are more dense, you see less car ownership rates. You see higher uh transit use uh within those census tracts. And that's the type of thing that we would want to encourage if we are uh adhering to S C A Gs and the state's R E N A standards and the, the mandate that we have to, to build more housing. So it, it's a question of the, the housing is coming. Which type of housing do you want to allow? And which one maximizes our ultimate goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions? So, you know, yes, in theory, we would be the, the greenest city we could possibly be if we just stopped development. But that is not the reality in which we live in, uh, and we need to be able to adapt, which is part of the reason why we're, we're doing this exercise. So that aside, uh, I did have a couple of comments about the M L S uh section specifically. And by the way, thank you all for putting this together. I think you all have done a very thorough job. I had a comment about three point one. Um, there's mention about doing a transit stop analysis. And words matter, and I just want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity here. Three point one mentions B line specifically. Um, and I did notice in other sections within M L S, uh, other transit agencies are mentioned. And so I want to make sure that if we're looking at bus stops and uh transit stop amenities, we're not just looking at the B line, uh, because there are many transit agencies that service the city of Glendale. And I want to make sure that if we're putting in improvements to transit stops, that we're putting at where they matter the most. Uh, or where, I should say, where they make the most impact. So Metro, MetroLink, uh, Commuter Express is another one that uh we often overlook. Uh, there are many transit uh uses uh that are utilized by Glendale residents that I just want to make sure that we include that in there and it's not exclusive to B line stops. And then I noticed the M L S four point eleven. Um, there's mention about coordinating with car companies to provide uh E V uh uh car share. Um, I think I've mentioned this in previous meetings. Uh, the city of L A does have a program called Blue L A. It's a E V car ride share service that's provided uh by the city. And it's funded by Southern California A Q M D, uh, partially. Um, I'm not sure exactly what the, the funding streams are, but it's a subsidized program that uh is essentially by uh car share that is specifically located in underserved areas within the city of L A. Um, so if you don't own a car, but you need one in a pinch to go to the grocery store or to, or you're buying furniture, you need a car for a very specific task, but don't have access to a car. Um, you have these publicly available cars that are available to you and they're parked right on the street where they're, they're, they're charging as they're parked there. Um, and they're exclusively, they can be exclusively used by people who are subscribing to that service. So um as part of four point eleven, I hope that we can revise that language to see if the city of Glendale itself can acquire funding to have some kind of subsidized program uh as well.
Um, Commissioner Bartr, if I, I do apologize, um, if I may interrupt, I'm, I'm so sorry.
Sure.
So we have an issue with um the phone calls. The phone calls aren't being taken right now. So we're going to try and figure out a couple of things. We can take the commission comments now throughout this meeting. We could take public comments at the next Sustainability Commission meeting. Ask people to come back to us with their public comments at that meeting. Um, obviously that puts us kind of fairly long distance from getting that feedback to Ringcon. We could ask people to email the Sustainability Office their public comments and we can record those and then pass those public comments onto Ringcon. So that's one option. The second option is to take a recess, see if we can get um the city clerk's office um staff so we can take public comments. Um, so those are the options that are in front of us. So I do apologize to the commission sincerely for this, for this error, so.
Yeah, no, I understand and thank you for the comments or the options, David. Um, I have, you know, heard from folks myself who want to call in. I, I would welcome both strategies. Maybe if we can encourage folks, if they want to email the Sustainability Office, they're welcome to. So in a minute, maybe you can say the email. But if it, if it would be a matter of resolving this issue, if it'd be easy to resolve the issue by taking a short recess, um, why don't we allow uh Alec to finish first his comments on this particular section? And then we can conclude then, or take the recess then, if that's okay.
That'd be perfect. Um, we have personnel coming in, so.
And, and what is the email that folks can use if they aren't able to get through and want to email?
It's going to be sustainability@glendaleca.gov. Again, that's sustainability@glendaleca.gov.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Uh, that was it. So I'll just summarize three point one. If we can uh integrate other transit agencies into the transit stop analysis. And four point eleven to include language that mentions the possibility of a city-run program or a, a publicly subsidized program available for the public. And that's it for M L S.
So if you'd like to call us into recess.
Great, yeah, thank you. So I think we'll take uh ten, do we need ten minutes, five-minute recess? Gosh, okay, uh fifteen-minute recess. We'll be back, thank you. Gosh, okay, 15-minute recess, we'll be back, thank you.
Okay, welcome back, everyone.
So I believe we've worked out the technical difficulties. For everyone that is interested in calling in, I believe the best plan, just given that we're working through this section by section, we would, we would ask that you please stay on the line and we're going to take calls at the end once we work through, work through the whole plan. So please, please stick around because we'd love to hear what you have to say. So with that, does anyone else want to speak to Section 4 Mobility and Land Use Systems?
Cole, can I ask a quick clarifying question? So are we just, as, I'm trying to remember the action item, or if it, if this is an action item, are we simply providing comments or are we going to have to collectively agree on a recommendation?
That's a great question, yeah. So given that we are providing feedback and this is an action item, it seems as though we will need to come to an agreement on that set of recommendations or set of feedback, is that right?
So the motion is that the Sustainability Commission will provide comment to Rincon Consultants on the proposed measures and actions. So they'll be, will be taking your comment, that comment will get fed back to Rincon as part of all the other comments from staff, the people that don't think there's, you agree on the comments, these are your individual comments about the measures and actions on the cap.
Okay.
The other action writing though is, there's a lot of Phase 1 actions you'll see. If you have any recommendations or any thoughts that from this Phase 1s may move to Phase 2 or Phase 3, and is to provide us that guidance too, we'll record that and that will again be provided back to Rincon Consultants.
Thank you.
Yeah, rather complicated, okay. So, thank you, does, does that answer it? Yeah, so we'll, we'll just continue to provide our feedback and go from there, so. Okay, please.
On the mobility part, I think the report needs to acknowledge that Glendale is part of the pilot program that was approved in January but has yet to be implemented for traffic control, for putting in speed cameras that automatically issue tickets to people that are speeding in an effort to help reduce speeds and make the streets safer. I didn't see that in there, so I mean, it was still in the works probably when you were working on all this, but that's something that should be included and incorporated into the, the plan for making streets safer and.
Do you have a particular kind of section of 4 Mobility and Land Use? Just looking at those kind of headers, I'm just wondering what, what section you might want to include that in, would that be?
Well, where they were talking about, you know, reducing lanes to calm traffic, that maybe we can calm traffic by implementing the already approved speeding thing and seeing how that works before we go eliminating traffic lanes, for example. Because we, we don't know, we don't know what effect that will have, you know, so maybe that solves the problem and that we don't need to.
So where, sorry, where is this again, which, which particular?
Well, it's mobility, so, let me see where I.
There's, there's a Vision Zero section.
Vision Zero section, yeah.
That touches on safety.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't.
That's 2.1, so complete and implement the Vision Zero pedestrian plan by 2035.
Yeah, so that was MLS 2.1.
Okay.
So as part of the, Commissioner Basemore says, as part of the development of this plan, we have spoken to planning information. So the Vision Zero Plan, the Bicycle Transportation Plan, the goals of those plans are going to be included in these goals as well, they're not separate from that, so where, where we have a, a planning process going on and it relates to the cap, we have brought that into this, so just want to provide that context.
Anyone else for Section 4?
I don't have my hard copy with me, but I believe the plan talked about unbundling the costs of parking structures from rent, just wondered, do you have an example of that? How, how would the developer manage that?
I couldn't speak to that. So a lot of the time, when you, you know, rent an apartment, it comes with a parking space, it's like together as one cost, and not, not always, but what we're promoting is that those parking spaces are rented out as a separate cost, so the idea is that you could potentially rent out, you know, oftentimes there's less parking than there is units or less vehicles than there is parking spaces, so you could have potentially cheaper apartments and then rent out the parking spaces separately, so that those who are looking to save on rent could do so, and you'd have, you know, still have the ability to rent those parking spaces out, is the idea.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I'll add some, some comments for this section real quickly. For Section 1.1, Action 1.1, just wanted to call that out, I think that's a great, we mentioned this a little bit already, but the zoning, reconfiguring the zoning for small-scale retail, I love that idea, you know, I'm in an area that is relatively dense as well that I think could benefit from having a few more businesses in the area, that's something in, looking around the city, I, I would love to emulate the model that we talked about of Adams Hill and, and Montrose, Kenneth Village, so love to see that in there. For 1.8, I know, this is regarding the congestion pricing plan and looking at kind of holistically all of that's in, all of what's included in this particular subsection, I did want to think, I did want to propose maybe pushing, that might be a case where we might be able to push that to Section, or excuse me, Phase 3, a little further out, you know, I am, I am interested in the possibility of that, but you know, we are a relatively small city and considering the recent setback to that in New York City, I just have to wonder if that's something that, you know, might take a while for us to get right here in Glendale. So, you know, that's one, one particular item, I think we could move out. Let's see, so for, for MLS 2 under 2.1, I've noticed that for some of the phasing, there's case, there's some cases where, you know, it's an individual phase, which if I'm remembering correctly, I think that's from 26 to 28, the phases are 2026 to 2028, and then it's 29 to like, thank, thank you. Oh yeah, 25, 27, 28, 30, and then 31, 33, I think it was. So we're working with about eight years here. The point I was getting at is some of these phasing are, are shown as like the one and only phase and then there's some that are multiple, like all three phases, and it's a little unclear to me why some are that way and why some aren't, and I, I don't think we needed like work through this and, you know, for each and every one of these, but in the case of 2.1, I thought this might be something that I would like to continue through multiple phases. So this is regarding the Vision Zero pedestrian plan that we were just discussing, you know, wanting that to be a continuous evolving document or evolving strategy for us here in Glendale, so you know, if that can be all three phases, that'd be great. Let's see, additionally for 2.6, this would be something that I thought might be interesting to move up, it's regarding the thermometers and ground-based thermal sensing tools along brand near the Cool Pavement and Tree Planting Pilot. It seems like a relatively simple thing that we might be able to implement sooner than later, and right now it's in Phase 2, and I just think that if we have the opportunity to capture some data, why not get ahead on, you know, get started on that if we can. Let's see, 2.9, again, MLS, yeah, 2.19, adopting the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code. This is something that I thought would be worth exploring, worth pushing up to Phase 1 as well. You know, we are, we are progressively seeing more and more heat events and I think if we can start to, you know, consider more of the impacts that heat islands are having, that would be great. And this, this is a case where there isn't a date for this metric in here or this, this target date, and I, and I think we mentioned this already, Ryan or Hannah, you may have already mentioned this, but when, when are these dates being filled out? Is that going to be in the next process or do you want us to provide suggested dates today?
We're going to be working through, I mean, if, if there are dates that you have in mind, we're happy to hear them. I think we're going to be refining this with staff as we go through the implementation plan, which will really dig into timelines, budgeting, funding and financing opportunities, and that, that kind of next phase is where we'll get into most of that detail, but yeah, if you have thoughts, happy to hear them tonight as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I wrote, I just kind of jotted down various sort of hypothetical dates, but you know, in this case, for instance, 2035 seemed appropriate. Let's see, I'll just continue, just a couple more here, so for 2.22, this is regarding the San Fernando project, you know, that's, that as I understand it is a project that's on, that's already underway unless this is referring to something else, so I thought, you know, this is a case where we should put that in Phase 1 and have that be moved up, you know, have that date be 2028 or something like that, just because, you know, that's going to be done sooner and it'd be great to have that checked off as completed. And then for some of the, the kind of headline numbers in this whole section, you know, I don't, I don't know if my colleagues want to kind of endeavor to, to set metrics or dates today, but you know, I had, I had a little bit of fun just kind of going through and like thinking through what, what some of them might be, but I think the first, the first one was for MLS 2, this is page 28, this is regarding reducing VMT. So I threw out the dates of 10% by 2030 and then maybe 30% by 2045. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, you know, urban planner by any means, but I think if we can start to, we can have some solid numbers in there and, and start to work towards something of that, of that scale, I think that might be great. I myself, I'm a big walker, biker, you know, if we're starting to, to densify neighborhoods, you know, or just even allow for, for more comfortable walking and environment, walking and biking environments, then I think those would be great, great targets. Let's see, for MLS 3, this is regarding enhancing the transit system to be more resilient and accessible, convenient to increase ridership, or excuse me, and convenient to increase ridership numbers. I put in 15%, I think would be great by 2030. And then for 2045, a little bit of a low number, but 30%, something like that, you know, I'd love to see it higher than that, but something in that realm would be great. And then lastly, I'll just finish with, oh no, yeah, so for MLS 4, a couple numbers in here for the headline, headline description, so increased passenger and commercial zero emission vehicle use and adoption, love to see something like 20%, you know, saying it out loud, that's, that seems, that seems pretty, pretty high, but 20% for passenger vehicles by 2030, and then maybe 50% by 2045. And then for commercial, potentially 10% by 2030, because I know that's taking a while to get off the ground, and then as high as maybe 80 by 2045. Okay, a couple more things for MLS 4, the, yeah, and then I'll wrap, I'll wrap up for this section. So for 4.7, this is for basing, excuse me, for increasing chargers, public chargers throughout the city. I think, I don't know what our numbers are right now, and of course that, that should guide what goes in here, but something in the realm of maybe 100 publicly accessible Level 2 chargers by 2030, and then even as high as maybe 500 by 2045. Now, that's, that's a pretty high number, but I think if we're, if we're targeting as high of adoption for EVs as we've discussed, or as what the state's even shooting for, then I think we're going to need something in that realm. And then a couple more phasing suggestions here, so for 4.9, incentivizing residential electric vehicle charger installations and panel upgrades through on-bill financing, would love to move that up to Phase 1, if that's something that can be considered sooner than later. I know we, I believe we already offer some kind of rebates for that, but if it can be incorporated into on-bill financing, that'd be awesome. And then lastly, MLS 412, conducting a comprehensive assessment of primary last-mile delivery routes. I think if we can start the conversation with, just even here at the city and then of course with our businesses here in this, in, in the region around alternatives to, you know, big, big box trucks and of that nature, I mean, we, there are interesting models out there of, of last-mile delivery that utilize things like cargo bikes, that I think would be awesome to, great, great to see adopted here, so I'm not sure how the city, you know, would support or incentivize that, but if there are ways we can start that discussion, I think sooner than later. I know, I know even with just EVs, I, Amazon has pledged to, to start utilizing EVs, exclusively EV delivery vehicles by some, some date, I think it's like maybe even 2030, and I've yet to see a single one of those here in the city, I've seen some from FedEx, but I've, I've been curious to know why that is the case, so. Great, well, that's, that's all I have for Mobility and Land Use Systems. Anyone else? Should we move on to? Now, I'm not a traffic engineer, you know, urban planner by any means, but I think if we can start to, if we can have some solid numbers in there and start to work towards something of that scale, I think that might be great. I myself, I'm a big walker biker. If we're starting to densify neighborhoods, you know, or just even allow for more comfortable walking and biking environments, then I think those would be great targets. Let's see, for MLS3, this is regarding enhancing the transit system to be more resilient and accessible, convenient to increase ridership, or excuse me, and convenient to increase ridership numbers. I put in 15%, I think would be great by 2030. And then for 2045, a little bit of a low number, but 30%, something like that. You know, I'd love to see it higher than that, but something in that realm would be great. And then lastly, I'll just finish with, oh no, yeah. So for MLS4, a couple of numbers in here for the headline description. So increased passenger and commercial zero emission vehicle use and adoption. Love to see something like 20%, you know, saying it out loud, that seems pretty high, but 20% for passenger vehicles by 2030, and then maybe 50% by 2045. And then for commercial, potentially 10% by 2030, because I know that's taking a while to get off the ground, and then as high as maybe 80 by 2045. Okay, a couple more things for MLS4. The, yeah, and then I'll wrap up for this section. So for 4.7, this is for basing, excuse me, for increasing chargers, public chargers throughout the city. I think, I don't know what our numbers are right now, and of course, that should guide what goes in here, but something in the realm of maybe 100 publicly accessible level two chargers by 2030, and then even as high as maybe 500 by 2045. Now, that's a pretty high number, but I think if we're targeting as high of adoption for EVs as we've discussed, or is what the state's even shooting for, then I think we're going to need something in that realm. And then a couple more phasing suggestions here. So for 4.9, incentivizing residential electric vehicle charger installations and panel upgrades through on-bill financing. Would love to move that up to phase one, if that's something that can be considered sooner than later. I know we, I believe we already offer some kind of rebates for that, but if it can be incorporated into on-bill financing, that'd be awesome. And then lastly, MLS412, conducting a comprehensive assessment of primary last mile delivery routes. I think if we can start the conversation with, just even here at the city, and then of course with our businesses here in the region around alternatives to, you know, big box trucks and of that nature. I mean, we, there are interesting models out there of last mile delivery that utilize things like cargo bikes that I think would be awesome to, great to see adopted here. So I'm not sure how the city, you know, would support or incentivize that, but if there are ways we can start that discussion, I think sooner than later. I know even with just EVs, Amazon has pledged to start utilizing EVs, exclusively EV delivery vehicles by some date, I think it's like maybe even 2030. And I've yet to see a single one of those here in the city. I've seen some from FedEx, but I've been curious to know why that is the case. So, great, well, that's all I have for mobility and land use systems. Anyone else? Should we move on to the next section? I'm happy to take suggestions if there's anyone that wants to pick one. Why don't we just start back at the top? Let's go to the social and governance system. So this is, this is starting on page five of the PDF, and I would welcome any comments from the commission, my colleagues on this.
I can go? So I had a quick clarifying question for 3.1 under SG. So I noticed there's a call for staffing, which I completely agree, we can't move any of this stuff without having the adequate staffing. And I know David does amazing work, but David needs help, as does the Sustainability Office. So I guess my question about that, and I agree it should be as part of phase one, so don't touch that. The one thing I noticed is it categorizes this as under public works. Is that, is that a typo? Or is that something that we would expect if it were to happen, that it would be a growth of the Sustainability Office? Or are we expecting the staff to be sprinkled throughout the various departments?
Commissioner Boucher, if we try to make...
This is a 3.1 under SG.
Page nine, the first action.
Yeah, I don't have the hard copy in front of me.
Yes, we have made that correction. It is not public works, but management services.
Okay, got it, perfect. Okay, great, good to know. And then, oh, so 5.2 and 5.5, I was reading these descriptions, and it's talking about this concept of cool block and how this can be a resource for local communities to come together and be a resource for one another. And I thought this was a little bit, I don't know, I'm happy to hear other people's thoughts, but it seems like a little bit of a duplicative effort when I think about like the emergency response system that we have within the city and the whole like block captain setup. I guess I'm curious if it would be more efficient use of our city resources to combine those efforts so that any emergency-related program, emergency preparedness program that we have within the city folds in the issues that come with climate resiliency. So I'm curious about that. I'm just thinking through like if I was to figure out how to prioritize all these objectives. That one kind of stood out to me as, oh, maybe we can just fold this into an existing program and expand its scope to include sustainability-related emergencies. And then there was one specific mention of utilizing existing neighborhood associations to build or develop this program. And maybe our consultants aren't totally familiar with the way that works here in the city of Glendale. The majority of the population of the city of Glendale is not represented by neighborhood associations. So those are the more traditional homeowners associations that are almost exclusively in single-family home neighborhoods. So I would caution that if we are to pursue this program, that it includes a support system that folds in multifamily communities and denser parts of the city so that they too have a block captain or cool block type of setup, so that it's not exclusive, even if it's indirectly to existing neighborhood association areas. So I just wanted to make a point of that. I think that's all I had for the SG section, so I'll stop there.
If I could come on that one, the National Out program actually does a lot of that, you know, overlaps with that. So it's all about residents getting to know each other, you know, to try to make the neighborhood safer, and then also identifying, you know, what people might have crisis training and, you know, things like that. So I think that would be a good place to also add the, you know, cool zone outreach to it. And my neighborhood association is the only one in South Glendale, and we are very welcoming to multifamily residents. In fact, we renamed our group from the Adamson Homeowner Association to the Neighborhood Association to be more inclusive over 20 years ago, I would say. And, but yeah, like Alex said, that the vast majority of residents don't have the benefit of voice to speak out over their quality of life issues and so on in the city, and it's very unfortunate. But I just wanted to mention that we do have that National Out program, and it's the first Thursday in August, so it's actually coming up pretty soon.
Just one quick comment if I may, I'm segueing off that. Let's see, item SG 5.3 on page 13 about outreach, you know, about health impacts. I'm wondering if the city has established relationships with local hospitals, clinics, et cetera, just so they could alert their patients and their clientele when they come in, you know, if the air quality is particularly bad or heat, and, you know, if you should be seeking, you know, shelter in a cooling center or something like that. Just thought that might be a good way to reach people directly. And I'm also curious, do we have, do any of the hospitals have cooling facilities? Do they set aside any space for that? I don't know.
All right, so I, for my comments on this section, I really liked what was included in SG1, not much to add there, aside from, I know for SG1.5, this is regarding specific evacuation procedures, because, especially because the fire department doesn't have a lot of these items in here. They have some, they definitely have some. I do want to push this one up potentially on their plate to begin to consider a little sooner in phase one, kind of what evacuation procedures might look like, especially for some of our canyon communities. So that would be one suggestion.
If I may comment on that, Chairperson Beasley. So we are doing a safety element alongside this Climate Action Adaptation Plan, and the fire department is involved in that safety element. So there has been cross discussion, because RINCON's doing the safety element too. So this one is actually going to be addressed in the safety element as well. So just to, the new evacuation procedures and everything have been looked at.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Okay, for SG2, 2.1, the physical locations and assets in the city for resilient centers. This does relate also to the cooling centers. You know, I think this isn't so much feedback, more so just an idea, but looking at our libraries and our community centers, I think, I believe in the city of Los Angeles, they designate every single one of their libraries as a cooling center, so they allow, you know, community members to come in. So that's something like 90, 90-plus locations. You know, we have, I think around eight, eight or nine here in Glendale, so very well-distributed throughout the city. So definitely getting libraries involved in that would be good. The same for SG2.6. So I know the lead department is Community Services and Parks, which I believe includes, if I'm not mistaken, libraries. No, is it which one?
It's a separate department.
I'm sorry, then.
Library Arts and Culture.
Library Arts and Culture, they're separate. So then maybe they could be involved in this one too. And this would be, this is regarding the year-round community events with educational resources at resilient centers. So this just, to me, just, it fits, having the libraries involved in that kind of curriculum, that set of activities. We've gotten grants, I believe, from the state or from the federal government specifically for programming within the libraries, so I think this would be a good fit for that. Let's see, moving on, SG3. For 3.1, I also, I guess I had a question for this, and I'm wondering why five positions? This is for hiring new staff. How did we land on that number? Is that just the magic number? The number that the city would need? I mean, what's the thinking behind that?
I think it's an anticipation of the scope and scale of the plan over time for it to be effectively implemented. Additional reasons would be quite, not saying that we're going to get five, but it's, again, some of the measures and actions in this plan are aspirational by nature, so.
Okay, absolutely. That is, this is a very ambitious plan. I think maybe the language for this one could be, could be modified or changed to say either hire five new positions or create and hire, because I would love for that to be one of the metrics potentially for this section is to have actually kind of onboarded those positions. I don't want it to be these vacancies that are created and then we simply sit on them. So having hiring involved in that would be good. I like the idea of the core team under 3.4. And then, let's see, phasing for this section for SG3. We, sorry, for SG3.7, this is about the citywide sustainability award program. I like this idea. I know we currently have a sustainability commission recognition we give out, and that's been well-received. My thoughts on that might be to push that one out potentially a little further. I mean, welcome pushback from my colleagues, but I have, when I look through this, I did try to my best to find some things that, you know, might not need as high of a priority. So I do like the idea of a citywide award program, like I mentioned, but maybe in the interim, we could continue with the commission and then eventually expand that into a citywide program. For SG3.8, this is a case where I thought we could move this one up from phase two to phase one, so this would be conducting or doing a feasibility study for improving or putting together worker protections, especially for outdoor workers. So this, to me, seems like a much higher priority in the absence of, you know, state Cal OSHA requirements, you know, if there's anything that we as a city can do to start to protect our, you know, our citizens and our workers that are going to be experiencing the brunt of these heat events, I think that would be something that I would like to move up sooner.
Well, Cal OSHA does have that, yeah. California leads the way in that sort of thing. In fact, right now, they're also developing one for indoor heat exposure.
That's right. Yeah, thank you, thank you. So then maybe this could be just, like it says here, getting in better compliance with that set of regulations that already exist that are on the books. So let's, I think, move that one up if we can. And that's all I have for SG, the social and governance. Okay, any other, does anyone else have any more on this section?
One comment. On 3.1, in terms of increasing community awareness, it was mentioned earlier partnerships with hospitals. One thing to note is that there are several federally qualified health centers in Glendale. These are community-based organizations, nonprofits that are based in Glendale. They are actually closer to the people that get the services than the hospital. They're very hands-on, they have, you know, urgent care centers and stuff like that. So one thing that I would recommend is take that into consideration as potential partnerships, the FQHCs.
Was that for 3.1?
That was for 3.1, community awareness.
Oh, I see. Yeah, so page five, the measure SG1.
Yes.
But section, I think that was a comment I had too, is the numbering is a little confusing. Hopefully that gets clarified in the final plan, but yeah, so for 1.1, SG1.1 looks like in the table.
What was the acronym again?
Federally Qualified Health Centers, FQHCs.
Okay.
I was going to mention on the cooling centers and libraries, I wish Glendale had libraries evenly distributed throughout the city, but they don't. And so in South Glendale, they're very deficient in libraries. My neighborhood association had to fight very hard to get even just a tiny, a tiny, tiny pocket library that would easily fit in this room. And it's only open a couple of days a week, and they're open even less in the summer, which is just astonishing since that's when kids would want to go to the library, you know, read, you know, get some books to read over the summer or something. It's just very disappointing. So I think the libraries could be, I don't know, maybe that could help libraries get the funding they need to put more of them in, I don't know. But I know a lot of states also use schools as emergency shelters. For example, Oklahoma, all the public schools pretty much are also tornado shelters. In Minnesota, new schools are required to be storm shelters as well, major additions in new schools. And so that's another opportunity, and they have more capacity even than what a library might have. And schools are more evenly distributed, I think, than the libraries are, though I would like to see libraries leveraged a lot more in the city and spread out more, so. And I agree with you on your reshuffling some of the priorities on there. I think some of those are something that should be done sooner than later and so on. So I second what he said on those phases, on that particular section.
Just, okay, just two really quick comments. Let's see, page nine, item SG3.1 about the Chief Climate and Equity Officer. The city of Los Angeles has the equivalent, so rather than reinventing the wheel, maybe see what ordinances, policies, et cetera, they've developed. And then on the next page, item SG3.5 about training program. We just, I just developed a very simple online mandatory zero waste training program for all City of LA employees. It's about 30 minutes in length, and you have to pass it. You can take as many times as necessary, but so you can, you know, animate, your companies animate very simple scripts, which is all we did. So I think it's a good thing to have like a baseline of knowledge that all city employees should have, so that's what I would recommend. Thank you.
When you said employee, that reminded me. On the, creating the five staff positions, maybe if they're more specific, you know, you mentioned the person that would do the equity piece of it, but maybe if we elaborate on that just a little bit more, it might be a little easier to figure out what those positions are and how they could go about being filled. I think just identifying those positions a little more specifically might help, you know, drive people towards a solution on those.
And I said, I know I said I was done with this section, but I did want to go back really quickly to SG4. I think this, I didn't have a lot of notes on it, but I think it is one of the more important subsections, if you will, of the section regarding community engagement, and in particular, engagement with our tribal communities. I really, I really wanted to call out SG4.3, establishing a formal consultation policy for local, for us, for the city with local tribes, and in particular, to increase tribal involvement. I wanted to ask, David, do we have a policy, even if it's not informal, something that's done within the city on engagement with our local tribes?
I think we just follow the... I think we just follow the requirements of Assembly Bill 52. So I don't think we'd go beyond that right now.
Thank you. Okay. Well, definitely appreciate seeing all of those items, at least the first four, in phase one. I think the SG 4.1 will, that will, and really, all of these will be aided by the work of our, our new employee, I should say, or new fellow, EDF fellow. So, you know, if he can, what was his name again, David?
Ben Marshall.
Ben Marshall, yes. So Ben Marshall, he can, if he can work on some of this too. Anyways, that's all I have.
I was actually curious about the SG 4.3 as well. I'm just curious, like, for the consultants, I suppose, what kind of avenues you were looking at to implement that? How would you go about doing that policy?
Yeah, I can jump in. And then Ryan, if you have additional things to add. I think really for this one, we're seeing a lot more of this kind of interaction between, you know, tribes and cities and jurisdictions, just breaking down some of those traditional barriers. And for example, we're working on a project down in San Diego and one up in the Bay where a lot of funding is coming through right now, specific to climate action through working with tribes. And so kind of just identifying new, you know, opportunities to work together. And essentially, we don't have a framework for that yet, but start to map that out in the future. And then Ryan, I don't know if you have anything else to add.
Oh, that was great. Okay, thank you. Let's move on to, what, did that, did that answer your question?
Yes, yeah. I just was curious, like, how far along in the process that was, but.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Okay, so we did, we believe we did, no, yeah, we're on building systems, which this one is, I think, should be section four, but it's, I think it's, at least in this packet, it's included in section three. So maybe it just missed getting a header in there. So, does anyone want to kick us off with this? It's starting on page 15, for those that are reviewing the packet. And if not, I can, I can go first. So, let's see here. So.
If I may make a comment before the commission begins feedback. Measure BLD1, increase carbon electricity procurement to provide 100% carbon-free electricity by 2035. We've actually changed that goal to fit the IRP, so that's 2045. So, just as an FYI. And again, the reason we've done that, because this would be a qualified cap. So we have to be realistic in terms of what is achievable.
And David, the reason that was originally 2035, was that because of the, I believe it was the goal of the council? There, there had been a resolution passed?
Correct.
For that? Okay, okay. Let's see. There's a lot, there is a lot in here. And I guess I'll start with section one. Phasing wise, I thought for BLD1.5, for working with our regional partners on increasing transmission capacity. I know that's something that should be first and foremost. I mean, should, it should be an ongoing project, but given how much in here is already labeled as section one or phase one, I thought maybe that could be moved to phase two, simply just because I would prefer some of these other, other areas be prioritized. For 1.3, the outreach and education and other incentive, incentives for the addition of 34 megawatt hours of solar electricity, how did that number get determined, the 34 megawatt hours?
That was taken from a study that Glendale Water and Power commissioned on the best and kind of most feasible approach to meet their IRP goals. So it looked at like what the capacity of the city is for more, for additional solar battery capacity that would be needed. And we pulled a lot of our actions directly from that.
Okay. And is that the, the recent, the most recent IRP, or is that the previous IRP?
I want to say it's the most recent. That was the intent. We can, we are going to be going back to double check some numbers for the forecast, so we can double check that. But I believe it is the most recent.
Okay. Because I know that the most recent one was, as I understand it, approved by the council and is currently with the CEC for their technical review. So if, if that's something that can be referred to for this, or at least, yeah, if that can be referred to, that would be great.
So if, to Chair President Bazemore and the commissioners, a lot of the items under this are being driven by the timeframe in the IRP. So for this particular one, it's going to be harder to, potentially phasing's closer in, so move from ones, two to ones, et cetera, et cetera. And this is, this one's very much focused on the capabilities of GWP, so it kind of reflects where GWP is. So I think it'd be harder to be more aggressive on these actions in this particular measure.
Understood, understood. And I know the one that I already mentioned, that I changed the, suggested changing on, was actually to push further out. And that was simply because for 1.7 and 1.8, those were cases where I thought we would benefit from moving those up. And as I understand it, the, isn't for 1.7, that 75 megawatt of local battery storage? I mean, is, is that not already underway and expected to be completed before? I would think it would be, I thought it was expected to be completed in the timeframe that's phase one by 2028. Is that, has that changed?
I'll have to check that and get back to you.
Okay.
The developers will move it to reflect that.
Yeah, because that, you know, of course, you know, I would want to see that number higher if we can. And maybe that could be another sort of option under here is, is to consider, if it's not already, consider additional battery storage that we, we might be, that might be feasible for the city. But at the very least, if this one, you know, if it's moved to phase one, that's something that we could, we could check off as a, as a success here. And then for 1.8, offering rebates in educational materials to community members. I mean, we, we are, as I understand, the city is doing some of that already. I believe there are rebates in educational materials online. Not to say it couldn't be bolstered, but I would think that should be phase one, you know, and, and this could be a case too, or would be phase one through three. I mean, let's, let's keep it going. I don't think that should be constrained to simply phase one, phase one only. Let's see. Moving on to BLD2. I know we will be discussing, I believe, later on tonight, 2.1, or something that would pertain to 2.1. So I'm glad to see that's in here. That's regarding the ordinance changes. Not much more to say about that. Okay, so on to building, BLD3, page 19. Here we have a couple headline metrics that are missing for the building retrofitting. And I wanted to throw out the idea of our first percentage being five, and then the second being 35. And I welcome other ideas, but I just think those might be, a couple ambitious, or hopefully, hopefully perceived as ambitious. I mean, five by 2030 is not very much, but I think getting to 35, if not more, by 2045 would be great. The, oh, yes, okay. So 2.6 and 3.5 are the same. So that's just one I want to flag. For the consultants, I'm pretty sure they're the same. So if they're, if they're supposed to be in both sections, that's great.
Yeah, so one's for new, one's for existing.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Okay, that's right. Thank you. Newly installed, that's right. Okay. 3.9 electrify on replacement ordinance for residential hot water heaters and HVAC How did we get to 2027 for that number?
Can you repeat what, you said water heaters and HVAC?
Mm-hmm. This is 3.9, page 20. Just curious about that 2027 date.
That is curious. Is, oh, 2027 is when we have it starting?
So it says adopt and electrify on replacement, replacement ordinance for residential hot water heaters and HVAC systems by 2027. So it would be adopted by then, yes?
Yeah, I think what we are, you know, basing it on is when, how feasible it is and what the legal climate is like to do that. And probably aligning with some of the air district requirements around zero NOx is a lot of what's going on there. So there are some, there are some limits to what we can do as a requirement for replacement of gas appliances. So kind of walking with that, I think what we're doing there is lining up with the air district timelines to that.
Okay, okay.
And there's some other ordinances that we can do in the shorter term that are less requirement-y and more carrots to get people to kind of go in the right direction and provide some incentives. But there are some limits legally after the Berkeley versus California Association lawsuit.
Of course. Okay. Thank you. The, I wanted to just mention 3.14. I just thought that was a pretty cool idea of having a loner program for water heaters and induction stoves. Not sure how something like that would be implemented and maybe the liability around it, but, might be complicated, but I just think that would be, that'd be a great, a great program to have for folks that, you know, it seems like it would be for folks that have a, a water heater that, that blows out or stove that fails. And so there would be something quickly that we could provide them when they're doing their upgrades. Let's see, 3.18, conducting a feasibility study to evaluate the relative cost and benefits of augmenting centralized power alongside DER. I would love to see this moved up to phase one, if possible. I don't know if that conflicts with the IRP, like you mentioned, David, but, you know, there are a lot of feasibility studies in here, and that's one I think would be great to have considered sooner than later. And then, quickly, just look at my notes. All right, I'll leave it there. Who's next?
I'll go next. Chair, I believe you mentioned on 1.5, to push the transmission projects to phase two. I'm going to respectfully disagree. Transmission projects, best-case scenario, take 10 years. That's, you know, engineering, CEQA, NEPA. So even if we started five years ago, we're still behind. So I would absolutely like to keep it as priority one, phase one. For 1.9, the model for emergencies and mobile batteries, I would say the care vehicle, like a van type or a mobile van type, that's the direction that FEMA is going. That's the direction that a lot of large utilities are going, because you don't know where the next emergency is going to come up, whether your supposed center, the resilience center, is it going to be in the middle of that emergency? Is it going to be possible to hold it? So repurposing an existing vehicle for mobile batteries, cell phone charging, our lives rely on cell phones now. So that would be the, the suggestion that I would have for 1.9. For 1.11, adopting the same standard, clearance standard for distribution lines as transmission lines, I'm going to question the feasibility of that. Transmission lines are often a lot higher, a lot farther from trees. Adopting the same standard to distribution lines that are meandering in our neighborhoods and streets and behind houses would mean basically eliminating all vegetation, anything around the power lines. As much as I want to eliminate those, you know, clearances for safety reasons, it's not feasible to apply the same standard as transmission lines to distribution lines. So this is something that has to be revisited. You can say more stringent standard for distribution line, but same standard as transmission lines is not possible. One thing that I would like City of Glendale to look into, which we don't right now, is proactively shutting off power when there's, the conditions are there to, you know, to ignite a fire, when there's low humidity, when there's high wind. If the conditions are there, and it's only a matter of a spark somewhere, I think the, given the change in the climate, we have to look at what else is being done. We don't want a situation like they had in Hawaii, where by the time they shut off power, it was too late. We have some neighborhoods in Glendale that they have limited egress, Chevy Chase Canyon being one of them. So I would highly, highly recommend for the City of Glendale to look into the proactive shutting off of power. For the loan program that you mentioned, going to be shameless here and put a plug at my employer, we do have a loan program for equipment and induction cooktops, not water heaters, but I would recommend looking at that as a model where the resident can pick it up from various centers. It's a little bit like the library, you know, if your current library doesn't have it, you can request it from somewhere else. It'll be eventually delivered to the library and you can use it for, in addition to loan program, I would say, doing a demo program, because a lot of residents, my mom being one of them, if you tell her induction cooktop, she doesn't believe it. If there's no fire, it doesn't work. So she needs to see to believe it. So loan program, demo program, hand in hand. That's all I have.
A quick follow-up on the distribution lines. I think we had, I thought we had, and if we don't, maybe we should think about it, but specifically calling for those standards. specifically calling for those standards in high fire zones, so like places where, not like within the community where, you know, it's going through someone's street tree or something like that, but more so where those distribution lines might be crossing through like an open wildfire prone area where they could cause, you know, potentially more, more issues. So I agree with you, we should, that should be honed in a little bit, and I think we could, if it doesn't say something like that, it probably could or should.
It doesn't, and what it says is that applying the same standard as transmission lines to distribution lines, please revisit that. The current guidelines that the PUC puts out, it's based on voltage, depending on what voltage the line's carrying, the line clearances are different. And they are changing, what, you know, and depending on what vegetation you have, ideally, you want enough clearance to last two years. The one type of tree that, you know, I despise is palm trees, because even if you trim them, within six months, the fons are dry and they're tender, so that's a whole other story. But please look at the guidelines that are put out by, by the CPUC.
Thank you.
Quick question, if we could go back quickly to item one point five in that same section, we talked about increasing transmission capacity. I should know this, but I don't. We're not talking here about new transmission lines, you're talking about increasing the capacity of existing lines, right? And how, what is the physical work entailed in doing something like that?
I think what, what it entails today is new transmission lines, and it says partnerships there with regional organizations. The only partnership that we have as our balancing authority is DWP, Nextdoor. So maybe, you know, Glendale Water and Power needs to think about joining CAISO or, you know, cost benefit analysis of having our next door neighbor. And our next door neighbor gonna do what's best for them, or are they gonna look out for us? So whether increasing voltage on the existing or doubling on the, the existing towers, engineering wise, it may or may not be feasible. There's maximum voltages that are allowed in, in California. You know, there's, there's folks that are looking at increasing that voltage to allow more transmission. So, and it's not going to be pretty if it's, if it's going to be additional lines. No one wants to see additional lines and it's going to be challenged, so that's the dilemma.
But would there be a CEQA process if you're just increasing the voltage rather than adding new lines?
Not to my knowledge, but today it's, it's not that easy to just increase the voltage and transmit additional electricity.
Okay, I have a few comments here. So for the help with air conditionings, that was like the building, BLD three point five was to require newly installed HVAC units to be two-way. I wonder if we've done a study yet to identify what, what units don't have air conditioning at all. There is, the Department of Energy has a program that actually helps people get free air conditioners. It's an assistance, you know, program for people that, that qualify as low income. It's the, LIHAP is the acronym, Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program. It's federally funded. So that's for air conditioners, but if we're requiring people to have ones that do both air conditioning and heating, I don't know if that qualifies or not. And there could be people out there, like their heater works, they just need an AC to make it through the summer, and there might, might be a financial barrier for them to get a unit that does both. I realize they're trying to be proactive for when the gas powered heating is done away with, but I think that might be an issue in the short term for some struggling families. And also for the, in three point two, the establishing partnerships with neighboring jurisdictions and developing a list of qualified installers of solar, that list should note which installers are, you know, XBEs, or it's like minority owned business, veteran owned, woman owned, small, disadvantaged small business, that sort of thing, just so, so we could try to help drive more business towards them and be more inclusive. And, and then as I mentioned earlier, when we weren't on this specific topic, but just being able to in the interim, find a way to, to give just small battery powered fans to, to families so they, that, you know, while we're working all this out and they're sweltering in the heat, that they could have something, you know, sooner than later that has, you know, a website or something on it that can help, so it can also be an informational tool as well and be kind of identified that this, where this device came from. It's a City of Glendale program and, and, you know, a hotline or something on there that would help them connect to those services. And let's see, also on the, yeah, I'm a fan of having air conditioning be mandatory. I know, like you can get a occupancy permit just by having heat, but air conditioning isn't required by code, but more jurisdictions are starting to do that as, as, you know, the climate continues to heat up to the point where, where it's dangerous. So, and I think that was, yeah, so that was it for now, thank you.
One quick question, what is the difference between heat pump and two air, two-way air conditioning?
It's, it's the same thing. Two-way air conditioning, that terminology kind of came about because air conditioning is also a heat pump generally, but they just kind of operate in one direction. So folks are installing central ACs that are essentially heat pumps, but not getting the benefit of having both heating and cooling. So as that is growing in popularity, it's a good opportunity if you are replacing your AC to just get a heat pump. It's like a full two-way heat pump to get heating and cooling, because the cost will be pretty similar.
Thank you.
If I could add one more thing for one eleven. For HFRA two and three, especially threes, the standard that Glendale may want to adopt is covered conductors. Glendale is, is falling behind where the standard today for a lot of high fire risk areas is covered conductor. Glendale doesn't use covered conductors. There's a swath of land within Glendale that's HFRA three, that goes along the two-ten all the way up to Duckmageon Park. I would strongly encourage, it's, it is a higher cost than the bare wires, but it's much cheaper than burying the lines.
Okay, so just, I'll try to be very brief. One point one, and thanks for pulling this up on the screen, it's helpful to try to follow. Yeah, so for this one, I, something stood out to me. I know the focus is battery and solar, but I'm, I'm thinking through other permitting needs that customers may have that may also contribute to energy efficiency, et cetera. So I just recently went through the window permitting process and I've gotten my permit, so I'm not, I'm not here to get any advantage by saying this, but it took a very long time to get that permit. And I think to myself, if somebody was going through this process in the summer months, they would be absolutely ruined by not having more efficient windows during heat periods. So if there, if we could expand the scope of streamlined permitting to include other home efficiencies, windows just being one example, I think that should be worth looking into. Two point two. I'm just gonna ask this rhetorically, I don't feel, you know, just for the sake of time, efficiency, you don't have to respond right now, but when I, I didn't have a chance to look into what tier-two requirements there are, but you specifically call out cool roof and walls, and it just got me thinking to myself, well, what other Calgrian tier-two requirements are there that we may want to fold into this as well? So, you know, as I read this on its own, yes, it sounds fine, but I know Calgrian has all sorts of standards and requirements, and I'm sure that there's more in tier-two than just cool walls and cool roofs. So just something to think about, if we can expand that scope, that'd be great. Three point one, I just want to emphasize that's something that I think is really important, that we do do some kind of study to determine how we can move forward with this. You know, we've already acknowledged that it's the existing housing stock that's generating a lot of these GHGs, you know, all of these policies and things. By and large, we talk about new construction, but I think we do need to talk about existing facilities and how we can make those more efficient, so let's move forward with that. Three point six. What did I have for three point six? Yeah, so I, I was just thinking through, like, you know, we want to talk about incentives for multifamily, but I think these incentives are still geared towards the property owner versus the, the utility customer. And I'd like to think, or I'd like for us to think through, what are the more like direct benefit incentives to the customer so that we can more confidently, we know more confidently that those benefits are absorbed by the customer rather than the property owner, who may pass down the savings to their tenants, or they may not, they may just pocket those benefits. So I want to think through, especially as we think through, like with an equity lens, how those benefits get to those low income stakeholders. And then four point two, we talk about solar on city property. I would like for us to think through partnerships with other agencies. Yeah, so we, we mentioned municipally owned, and I thought through, you know, there's so much land within our city that are owned by other agencies and operated by other agencies. Caltrans is just one of them. I was just looking at a map as I do daily for my job, but where the two meets the two-ten and the two kind of splits into two, there's a huge swath of Caltrans property that is just, is never going to be used for anything other than just shrubbery between two very large roadways. That's just one example, but Caltrans County, you may not have noticed this, but over the two-ten, there are, they look like bridges, but they're actually flood control channels that are capped. That can get solar panels on them. And then facilities too, there's a county facility on San Fernando, right as it bends in South Glendale. There's always people standing outside waiting in the baking sun to get their services, but if you look at a map, that building and its adjacent parking garage is covered in solar. And I know that there are other county buildings in the city. I think we should do our best to engage our partners, other government partners, to see where we can increase solar capacity in the city. I think that's it for building.
So I have a question here, as I'm looking through this, maybe I'm missing something, and please correct me if I am, but are there any actions here for decentivizing new fossil fuel, like sources, like power plants and things like that, or implementing non-fossil fuel power plants? Because I'm just, I'm looking through it, I don't think I'm seeing any to just, looking at the actual like power sources, like there's things about buying renewable energy and things like that, nothing about creating our own things or going away from the current fossil fuels that we're using.
So Commissioner Welsh, thank you for that question. So a lot of that is addressed in the Integrated Resource Plan about, that identifies where Glendale Water and Power purchases renewables, how many renewables they can purchase and what those, of those renewables, what can be transmitted into Glendale. In terms of the power plant that we have, we're going through that repowering process, and City Council took the decision to have certain types of engines put into that, which will form the base load, or not base load, I guess it's, they want the quick start-up engine, so when power is required, they can do that. In the long run, they are looking at transitioning away from natural gas potentially to hydrogen and green hydrogen. That's not going to happen anytime soon, that's a long time. So they have addressed that in the IRP, but Glendale has to, their primary, Glendale Water and Power's primary function is reliability, making sure that we can get power, so they have tried to address that.
I mean, it's, that makes sense, there's another policy that's implementing most of that kind of stuff, but, yeah, it's, it's, as I was looking through it, I was here, listening to the conversation, realized I'm not seeing anything about the actual source of most of the energy outside, because we're talking about a hundred percent carbon-free electricity. That's difficult to do if the base is going to be a fossil fuel, natural gas power plant.
I'd like to build off that, and I am a little bit embarrassed that I didn't bring this up earlier, but I think Executive Commissioner Welsh makes a really good point. I think there, there really is a lot missing from building section one, David, and I, I know you, you made the, gave the reason that this is due to the IRP, but I, I would push back and ask, why would we not want to codify some of the, the kind of goals and ambitions, goals and targets that have been, I know, strongly expressed by the community for increasing things like, like solar, rooftop solar, you know, battery storage, you know, things like even implementing vehicle-to-grid backup for, for homes. And for all of that to kind of only rest under, from what I see here, under one point eight of offering rebates in educational materials, I mean, I think there needs to be more in here about increasing these, these alternatives, these distributed energy resources, because, because as was just said, if we're going to get to a hundred percent, I mean, I don't see how that's going to happen with what's listed under, under this section. So what's, I guess, what's the thinking behind that?
Do you want to say anything, Ryan, or?
Yeah, you know, I think there's, I thought that we had at least a handful of things in there. Solar is a tough one at this point. The value of solar is a lot different than it used to be in California. I think your thoughts along the lines of, of more like battery and vehicle-to-grid are, especially vehicle-to-grid, are huge potential options to really help this out. That's gonna happen through kind of the EV adoption process. Most manufacturers are aiming to have vehicle-to-grid, vehicle-to-home, vehicle-to-device, that whole kind of space of charging infrastructure is still kind of being developed, and I think as we add EV charging, and we work on our grid, and we add these kind of necessary components to the, to the grid that we need to make that stuff work, that stuff will fill in as well. stuff will fill in as well. I think as far as addressing emissions from electricity, it, it doesn't matter at the end of the day, from a greenhouse gas perspective, if that power is being generated from a solar array in Central Valley at scale, really inexpensive dollar per watt cost, or if it's being generated by an individual on their home and stored by a battery. There's pros and cons to both. I would say that, you know, part of what's going on is like, yes, Glendale Water and Power has a new power plant that's going in that is gonna be able to run on gas. It also has an enormous battery associated with it, and has the ability to run on biofuels in the future. So I think what is in here is, is pretty aggressive for what the city actually has control over and can do. I think there's opportunity to add in maybe some more language around providing incentives, or at least education and direction around some of the benefits of having battery storage, because I think that's kind of one of the, the bigger areas that would be really helpful for Glendale to help support some of the other renewable. And I wouldn't scoff at the amount of solar that is included in there. So like 34 megawatts is a, is a pretty good amount of solar to go in a city the size of Glendale, especially all rooftop solar. So I think it is in there, maybe there's some work we can do to expand on that and make it more clear, but some of the goals in, that we have included in there are actually pretty substantial. If you were to like lay it out in a number of like, you know, the average home is like a three to five kilowatt system, so, you know, much, many, many individual home systems for that 34 megawatts.
Fair point, fair point. And having that capacity developed in Glendale is, would be tremendous, I agree. But to your point, you know, I think there needs to be a little bit more clarity on who that is, is that a city-owned site, is that, is that incentivizing, you know, businesses, homeowners, you know, multifamily, multifamily building owners to, to do that, or are we looking at other options? So, you know, I know community solar is something that I think you touch on in here somewhere, but I, I would love to see that being, being emphasized, especially when it comes to equity. You know, if we're, if we're encouraging, you know, homeowners to put in rooftop solar, then I think there need to be equal, if not more, consideration given to providing, providing solar and, you know, low-cost power for, for folks that, that don't have a roof to put that, that solar panel on. So I, I hear what you're saying around, well, around the, I guess I'm a little bit, I push back on, on the idea that, that the value of solar has decreased. I don't know if that was your word exactly, but it's, yes, maybe it's not quite the same as it used to be, but I, I still think it is, it's a tremendous tool. It would be a tremendous tool for us here in Glendale, for us to continue to build out that capacity. One thing too with this, with this section, I mean, I just, I guess I would wonder, you know, when we're looking at our, at our power, you know, our power makeup, one of the big, the big areas for our, our current base, you know, baseload is, is from the Magnolia Power Plant, you know, and that is entirely natural gas. And so one thing in here as an example would be, that I would love to see is maybe a feasibility study for, for potentially closing that, that facility down, you know? I just, again, I'm, I'm, I'm very struck by us saying that within this section, we're striving to achieve 100% carbon-free electricity, and yet there are all these other, other options that are just omitted from here, so.
So if I may.
Please, David, yeah.
So this plan forms the basis of us to reach our goals, the 2035 goal, the 2045 goal. This plan is not about doing everything in the first two, three, six years, because that's just unrealistic. This plan has to be adopted. This plan has to make sense to the capabilities and capacities of GWP, and understanding that stuff in this plan is fairly ambitious, so it's not a wish list. There has to be some like realism to what we can do. And the way the consultants have worked, they're pulling the information out of the ROP, identifying the greenhouse gas emissions reductions from these different strategies will help us get on our way to achieving the goals. This plan is also not static, so within this plan, after it's adopted, every three years after the adoption date, there's going to be analysis of the plan. We're gonna have to redo the greenhouse gas inventory, identify how we're progressing towards the targets and objectives within the plan. And that gives us the opportunity at those checking stages, like, are we making the progress that is required for us to meet our overall goals? If not, we're making that progress, okay, and we need to identify, maybe bring in different measures to help us do that. But this plan, I think, represents a really good start. I mean, there's 231 different actions in this plan that represent a really good start of us to go down this journey and hopefully meet our goals, so. I understand what you're saying. I understand that the, the importance of moving away, the investment from fossil fuels to non-fossil fuels and everything, and I think this does that, I think this plan does it very effectively. And I think this plan is fairly ambitious in what it's asking us to do as a city, so. But I do, I understand your hesitancy and your wish for more, but.
Yeah. Okay, well, I won't belabor the point more than I have already, so why don't we, we have one more section, unless there's anyone else that wants to say anything about the building, building systems.
I mean, would, would a, one like action number, starting the step of specifically de-investing from, or, that's the right word, yeah, de-investing from fossil fuel resources be feasible, like just things that's, okay, we're planning to look at this, or some study or something on the feasibility of doing that as an action number?
I do not know the answer to that. I know that Glendale Water and Power has legislative, has that they have to adhere to and everything, so I assume that would take precedence over that, so.
But would we be able to add something like that, that language?
I do notice.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just gonna add in, like, this stuff you're talking about is in, it's in the resource plan. Like, they have to, they have to phase out fossil fuels in order to meet the carbon-free renewable electricity requirement for the state of California, and it's going to be a huge, huge undertaking. So in that plan, which we reference and don't try to like reinvent that wheel here, there are strategies for like, how much storage would be needed, how much renewable would be needed, increasing transmission, distributed energy resources, energy efficiency, like all of these buckets that need to come together. It's all like in the consideration, and I think the other thing to keep in mind is that while we're needing to increase the amount of renewable we have, we're also significantly increasing the amount of electricity we're gonna use. So there's competing challenge here. So I think, I, I love where this is, where your heads are at, and I think it's really important. But I would say, in the plan and in the plans we're referencing, there is a focus on decarbonization and moving away from fossil fuels, whether that's from, you know, wind, or solar, or biofuels, or hydrogen, there's kind of gonna be a patchwork of those things in order to replace the traditional, like, but that, that is in there, but that, that is in there, and it's part of the work that GWP and frankly, every utility in California is doing right now, in order to meet these like very aggressive goals.
Okay, yeah, that makes me feel a lot better, just that explanation there, because I obviously don't have the other plan in front of me. I was just reading this one, but yeah, thank you for the clarification.
Urban ecosystem, Section 5, this is page 44, this is one of the longer, longer sections, so let's, let's finish, what am I trying to say? Let's, let's, let's wrap it up. No, I'm just kidding. All right, who, who wants to go first?
I'll go first, because I only have one item in this section. Let me, let me set the tone here. Yeah, so these are city-owned parking lots and vacant space for multi-use, open spaces and parkland. I'm very much interested in this. I think this should be a top priority and should be moved from Phase 2 to Phase 1. I think that it has long been understood that South Glendale is underserved with the lack of park space that's made available within that part of the city of Glendale. I know there was an analysis done actually for a specific parking lot, Lot 11, to be repurposed from its current condition, which is being leased out to a car dealership to park cars, to potentially serve a need of having additional park space in South Glendale. So I don't know why it was considered as something that could be Phase 2, but I'd like to push that to Phase 1, given the, the context of, of South Glendale being underserved in the, in the park realm. So that's my only note for this section.
And Commissioner Bartra, I'll get back to you on that actually, because at our planning meeting, they did mention something specific to this that the city has done, but I forgot what it was, but I'll respond to you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a few comments on this section, mostly to do with the food rescue, I guess UE 1.2 on page 44. Has the city not completed this study yet as far as amount of edible food, you know, with the county? I'm just wondering if the statistics or the metrics in this section are already available.
I believe the city has completed the study, so there is a couple of action items like that in this.
Right.
And the reason that they're there is because the city's already working on it, so we can take the credit for it.
Okay.
Already.
Great. One thing, I, I do some food rescue for LA. There's still a great deal of resistance to donating surplus edible food, people still fear they're going to get sued, a lot of restaurants don't seem to know about the Good Samaritan law, so I think it would be helpful, at the time a restaurant goes through the permitting process to set up shop here, if there could be outreach about those ideas, about those, that law, and also what LA County says, you know, that food rescue, food donation, perfectly acceptable. Let me see, this is a little bit of a stretch away from that, but if you want successful food rescue programs, you're gonna have to start looking at your building codes, because you need to look at infrastructure for this. So if you're a large tier 1, tier 2 generator of surplus food, maybe you want space for two refrigerators, so you can separate, you know, segregate the surplus food you wanna donate. So I think we're going to be redoing the Burbank, I guess it's Hollywood Burbank Airport now, and we're one of the parties to that, centralized kitchen facilities in malls, airports, et cetera, so you've got one central place where dishwashing can occur for all the vendors, so they can have reasonable foodware, but also where are your food rescue, your packing of the materials, getting the ready, stuff ready for pickup. So if you have building codes mandating things like that, but I would love to see, could we ever go to the, an airport commission meeting and talk about that? Because now's the time to strike, given they're going to be renovating the airport. But we've gotta start thinking about logistics for that, and, you know, space for source-separated material streams, a lot of buildings just don't have the space for that. I know there was one in downtown LA, they, they goofed when they planned the building, they literally did not have floor space for trash bins, so they had to custom fabricate trash bins that had very small footprints, that were very tall. So I think we need to look a lot more at building codes and making things mandatory, clear, but everything to facilitate reuse and food rescue. Let's see, what is it, 1.3 on page 45. I, I have to voice my displeasure with the pails, it's talking about the organics, pails. The pails to me don't make any sense, especially since we in Glendale can put all of our food waste and food soil papered into clear bags that then, we then put into our green bins. I just have a clear bag in my freezer and everything goes in there. I don't understand the pails, the, so many people eat out, order pizza. I would guess that for a certain demographic in, in Glendale, food soil paper versus organic, actual organic waste is probably the most prominent. I would have given everybody a year's supply of clear bags to put in their freezer. I, I don't get the pail. And, and why would I wanna separate some food waste into pail, then I then have to go dump it into a clear plastic bag? Every additional step you take is called friction, and people drop off every time there's additional friction involved. So I would, I don't get the pail, I never gotten, never understood the pail. I would consider maybe taking bags rather than continue to do the, the pail outreach if you haven't, you know, distributed all of those. And I think, I think that was it, thank you.
One, one quick comment on the pails, because that's interesting you bring that up, is I, my household, we, my wife and I use a pail, but it's an aluminum pail, and it has a charcoal filter on the top, and then you put the plastic bag in that. Granted, those are a little more expensive than a free pail from the city, but I think it's a great alternative for people that may not have, like in my case, I don't have a large freezer, I understand that that helps with keeping, you know, the smell down, but if you have a pail that you can put the bag in with the filter, we leave that on the counter for three, four days, and it, you know, no smell, so I'll just, I'll throw that out there.
No, no, that, I get that, but one question, I don't know if you ever get pizza or takeout and delivery, where do you put your pizza box? Do you shred it if it's inside the pail?
Something like that, unfortunately, that goes straight to the green bin, so it, it requires a trip outside.
Pizza boxes are recyclable, as long as they're not too brody.
Okay, who's next?
Well, I, yeah, I mentioned about those pails when they first talked about it, because I mean, space is at a premium in a kitchen, whether you're in a single-family home or multifamily, it's just, you know, giving up counter space, and, and yeah, that doesn't fit in my fridge or my freezer, and so, yeah, and they're plastic, and, you know, they're, a lot of them just probably aren't being used at all, so that is pretty unfortunate. And I think we do need to look at finding a, a different company that, you know, one that doesn't require the plastic bags, as I, I remember Commissioner Pinkerton mentioning in LA, they don't have to put their organics in plastic bags.
Although, well, maybe the thing to do is offer both, after, offer the plastic bags for those who want that and have the space, or the pails, but you know what, one thing, I've talked to a couple organics processors since, who say your food waste and your food soil paper should go through grinding, pre-processing grinding process, and they actually prefer the stuff to come in bags, so it really depends on the organics processor. I understand the bag you're adding more plastic, but to me, a bigger container means greater diversion. Thanks.
And if there's someone else that wants to go, I, I believe I'm done, but though I may jump in there.
I'll go next, if you don't mind. 2.14, I would prioritize vegetation management practices for wildfire mitigation purposes. I think it should be Phase 1, if it is a hazard, fire hazard especially. For 2.18 and 2.21, 2.21 mentions partnerships with Glendale Unified and private schools for areas that were park deficient, especially South Glendale. We need to look at private schools, we need to look at Caltrans right-of-way, we need to look at utility right-of-ways, and I often hear excuses that, you know, property prices are too high in Glendale, Glendale City can't afford to buy a property just to convert it to a park. What if some of the properties are already purchased privately or by private agencies? So you could easily, with minimal cost, retrofit them and have agreements with those agencies. A really good one would be, for example, Glorieta Park is a utility right-ofway. And Glendale City pays minimal rent annually to use that park. We need to look at partnerships like that. If there's a private school in South Glendale, there's one off of Glendale Avenue, that they're not using the playgrounds at night, summertime, because there's no school summer. Maybe the city can rent the playground for X many weeks or months. Kids still live in that area, whether the school's open or not. So I would suggest including partnerships, in addition to Glendale Unified Private Schools, mention specifically utility right-ofways and Caltrans right-ofways. A really good example locally is city of Linwood, landlocked, not a lot of parks. They have partnership with Caltrans, and they converted a lot of the spaces between the freeways and the city streets into parks and bike paths. And, yeah, it's not the best place to walk when there's big rigs driving on the seven-ten, but it's better than none. So don't look for the perfect, look for what we can achieve. Four point one, charging infrastructure and the charging network. I've mentioned this, in this commission meeting before. We have charging deserts. I'm going to call it deserts for lack of another example. Montrose being one of them. If it's our marquee shopping area in the city of Glendale, there's a lot of public parking. None of them, none, have a, an EV charger. You know, surely we, the infrastructure's there. Utility power lines and the poles are, are in the parking lot, you know. So it's not like we're going to spend a whole lot of money to transport power to that area. The power's already there. So I would specifically look at the charging deserts. Look at where people are frequenting, shopping, spending an hour or more, and place the charging infrastructure there. I mean, if Americana can do it, if Glendale Mall can do it, Gannon Gallery can do it. We should be able, as a city, to do it in our marquee shopping areas. We talked about neighborhood shopping, walkability. How about walkability where people can charge and walk? Especially when our power is increasingly going to be more renewable in the future. We need to incentivize and find ways, convenient ways for people to charge. So that's all I have.
I was noticing that number two point eighteen, the evaluate and update the code to require developers to submit an arborist survey with a tree protection plan and approval from supervising private arborist. That was something that was in the, the staff report for the, when we were updating the Indigenous Tree Ordinance. And because it was in the report as a recommendation and not actually part of the proposal, it got spun off at the last minute as city council was voting on it, but they had said that they would bring that back. So to me, that's something that could actually happen within the next month or two. So having that as a two is probably kind of inaccurate there as a, as a phase when this is something that's, the current city council is already aware of, and, and they were all supportive of it. It's just the, the city attorney had said, well, you know, it's, this wasn't actually part of the proposal, so we got to do that separately. And so, so I think we could do that sooner than later, instead of making it be phase two. Sorry, don't mean to badmouth your boss, Jillian, but I was, I was not very happy when that went down, because it was all, you know, they'd all decided on it, the, the meeting before. And then when they went to vote, all of a sudden, it's like, oops, this is, this has to come off. And it's like, wait, wait. And I was trying to call in, and it was like, too late. And, yeah, so, but that's just like more of a follow-up item from that previous one. I started laughing. I don't know. Oh, and then, so speaking of trees, the, my least favorite one about trees here is to remove traffic lanes to put trees. I don't think it's going to go over very big in, in sensitive areas or any other areas. Just the traffic flow is so, so bad in Glendale, and it's, and South Glendale is very hard to get around. And I don't, I don't think that's, that would go over very well if we start removing lanes to put in large trees. And there's, when there's lots of other places that we could be putting large trees. So, okay, that's it for me.
All right. Well, there's a lot that I like in this, but I will, I will call that out another day. But I did want to mention, so UE three, this is regarding the potential for wildfire to spread in Glendale. I, I really like this section. I think this deserves a lot of attention. I imagine the fire department is already working on this, but, you know, with partners from, from Public Works and GWP, I think there's a lot that can be done. I am curious, though. I, I want to know, is there any prescribed burning that takes place already in Glendale? Is that, would that be new to the city? As, as a wildfire prevention strategy?
They don't do burns, but they do, they do deploy goats near GCC for wildfire mitigation.
I think is one of these strategies. It was something around like, yeah, getting, getting a shepherds, local shepherds. So that's great. Well, anyways, with that, I just think, of course, what comes with any kind of prescribed burning is, is good community, community engagement, community, just education, just to understand what the point of this is. And I'm not, I'm not sure if that's in here or not, but I think it maybe goes without saying that people are going to want to know how it's being done, you know, how it's being done safely, and why, really why it's being done. And, and I would love to know what the number that makes it into this headline. I don't know what our overall kind of wildlands look like that we have in Glendale that needs to be managed with, with prescribed burning, but, or brush clearance, but kind of knowing, knowing what that number would be, would be really interesting. So, okay. Well, that's all I have. Are there any other comments of anyone on any section? Oh, yes. Well, if there are none up here, can we please go to the, the phone lines to our, do we have any callers?
Yes, we have two callers on the line. Jackie, can you hear me?
Yes.
Jackie, you are on the line. You have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you. First of all, I was really impressed with the organization and detail of the CAAP draft measures and actions. I'm going to mention a few areas. Some of them have already been mentioned. BLD one, first of all, the IR, the original IRP was vetoed by council. And so the IRP that was passed by council is 2035, not the one that GWP wanted. So that's an error if, if you guys are planning to change it to 2045. It is 2035 in the revised IRP that went in, I think in April or something like that. Things like closing magnolia, more city-owned storage. I mean, it only mentions the seventy-five megawatts that's already funded, and that's great, but that should be the first step, being able to use the excess solar that people produce should be really important. Vehicle-to-grid, community solar and storage, getting rid of ma, closing magnolia, if I hadn't said that before. Then there's several items that occur to me because I live in one of these canyons with one way in and one way out, much worse than Chevy Chase. So I live in Bonal Canyon. SG one point five, the evacuation plans for vulnerable areas need to be done now. People can die. There is only one way out of our canyon at the current time. I've heard recently that there might be a not-too-hard way to get a second way out. But that really, really needs attention sooner than later. And maybe it goes part of the safety plan, but really, really important. The brush clearance, it should be that all acreage that's identified is addressed yearly, and I couldn't quite understand the language that's in there, whether that's covered exactly what, the way I'm saying it, or whether it's slightly different. UE five, or somewhere, should be concerned about the water intrusion on the landfill, which happened at another landfill. It happened at Sunshine Canyon in Silmar. So it could fit within UE five point four for stormwater concern, or with UE five point eight, that it's not just the treatment plan, but also the landfill itself. Note, Glendale does not currently operate the landfill. It's done by the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts, but it has influence on it and will be operating the landfill when it is full and closed. So all the safety things that has to be incorporated later on. The landfill is one of the most dangerous facilities in Glendale, and it's virtually not touched in the, the cap. Having the biogas plant up there will only add to the dangers from fire and air pollution. There are plastic pipes in the landfill which collect the landfill gas and could melt if there was a fire, releasing methane, NOx, volatile organics, and more. This should also be addressed in the cap or in the safety plan. There is right now an underground fire, which is happening at another landfill in Los Angeles County, and that's Chiquita Canyon. There was a brief discussion between some of the commission members about increasing transmission on existing transmission lines. There was a recently good article in the Washington Post about a way to do that by changing the wires and not redoing the whole thing. And that could be something that could be extremely important to Glendale to get more transmission into Glendale. I think that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jackie. Elise, can you hear me?
Yes. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You are on the air. You have five minutes.
Okay. Thank you, Chair Bazemore and commissioners. And thank you to everyone who is working on this extensive document and all the planning that went into it. My comment was actually sort of made by a couple of the commissioners already. I noticed that almost all the city departments are listed as lead on some aspect of the plan, except for library arts and culture, which is not listed at all. And the library is a tremendous community resource and source of community resiliency and source of lifelong learning, and should be featured with all of the resilience centers and cooling centers that, that we should start with the library and make the library the base from which to build out that kind of physical infrastructure, and including also staff infrastructure in terms of expertise in putting on educational programs and gathering educational and learning resources on climate resiliency. To Commissioner Werner's point, yes, there are not enough library facilities in South Glendale, and we need to find a replacement for the mini library at Adams Square, which I think the lease is going to run out at some point soon. So we need another location in South Glendale for a, a library and resilient center. And the, the document in social and governance issues mentioned three, basically, community gathering centers. And, and I don't think three is enough. I think there should be at least as many as there are library locations, but there need to be more in South Glendale where there are not enough of those facilities for the residents. So that is my comment as it relates to library arts and culture. I think the staffing should include someone on the library, and the library should be included as a lead department somewhere, especially as it relates to education as the purpose of any of these specific actions in the climate and adaptation plan. And finally, I would just like to say, I would just like to push back as well on the idea of solar not being worth it. I believe that solar offers a local source of clean energy, and we should do everything in our power to make sure we have that added power when we need it and look into some innovative ways to supply it. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We have no more callers on the line.
Okay. Thank you, Nora, and thank you to our callers. I think with that, I believe we've concluded the discussion for this item. So David, can you remind us what our, do we, do we have a vote on this? Or do we just, what's, what's next? Or what do we do?
Priority actions as follows, as noted in the draft climate action adaptation plan, draft measures, strategies, and actions.
Okay. I, I would say we've completed that unless we need a vote. Then what is next?
It's a motion, so you need a vote.
So we do need a vote. Thank you. We do need a vote.
One question. Is the stuff that the commenter, or the, yeah, commenters said, like, put in as comments too when we vote?
So those comments will be noted.
Okay. Just want to make sure what the callers had was noted, because I liked what they said.
Okay. Do we have any motions to approve the, the action that we've completed? Or however it's worded?
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, starting again there.
The motion is that the Sustainability Commission will provide comment to Rinkon Consultants on the proposed measures and actions, and the commission will provide recommendations on the phase one priority actions as noted in the cap draft measures and actions.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Pro call, please. Commissioner Bartruf?
Yes.
Commissioner Werner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pinkerton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cartunian?
Yes.
Chairperson Bazemore?
Yes.
Hannah and Ryan, thank you so much. Appreciate your time this evening.
Yeah. Thank you, Hannah.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Take care.
You all, have a good night.
Next item is item five B, building electrification update.
So Chairperson Bazemore and the Sustainability Commission, this is another action item for the commission, where after the report that the Sustainability Commission may recommend that the city council produce, pursue new building electrification options as proposed by Rinkon Consultants. So I will review the memo produced by Rinkon Consultants and then take comment from the commission on, of those actions that Rinkon has recommended, which one you think we should recommend to city council for them to pursue. So a little bit of background. So as you know, back in November twenty twenty-two, the city adopted the Building Electrification Reach Code. the Building Electrification Reach Code. That was all new construction to be all-electric. In addition to the all-electric part of the code, non-residential or multifamily must install PV to offset 100% of electricity or cover at least 50% of roof space. There's EV charging requirements included in that reach code. There's limited exemptions for commercial kitchens, and there was the available infeasibility waiver. Service technically not feasible for PV or to be installed. There would be a waiver for that. Next. So in 2019, the California Restaurant Association sued the city of Berkeley on their fuel gas, gas ban piping in new buildings. That went to the three-judge panel of the Ninth Circuit Federal Court, struck down the Berkeley ordinance after that suit by the California Restaurant Association. The city of Berkeley requested an en banc hearing of the full court, and in 2029, the Ninth Circuit declined to reconsider the Berkeley decision. So many jurisdictions that had all-electric ordinances at that point either stopped enforcing their ordinances or looked to develop different ordinances based on the lawsuit by the California Restaurants Association. At the city of Glendale, we did continue to enforce the electric code, the all-electric reach code. However, understanding the Berkeley decision, the city did ask Ringcon to look at and provide us alternative options that we could research and pursue that would help us try to reach the goal of eliminating gas in new construction. Recently, the Glendale has suspended enforcement of the reach code, and in May of this year, Ringcon did provide the memorandum of different options that the city may wish to pursue as a replacement to the current reach code. So they provided three options. Option one was just to continue as what with the reach code right now, and obviously, there's pros to that, but the big con to that is legally tenuous, and as I said, the city's decided to stop enforcement of the current reach codes. Option one's not really an option for us to pursue right now.
David, if I could chime in there, because that's pretty important. We were contacted by the lawyer representing the California Restaurant Association, and they did ask us to take a proactive, us the city, to take a proactive stance on suspension, and we are pursuing these other options. So on June 4, in fact, the City Council did adopt a motion that specifically directs the building official to cease enforcement just of that portion of the reach code, not the PV portion and not the other portion. And we are hopeful that, once you hear these other options, that we have an alternative avenues that we can pursue, but I wanted to alert the Sustainability Commission to that development. Thanks.
Thank you, Gillian. So there is a couple of interesting options that have been put forward. We talked a little bit about this earlier on today. So another option is to develop an air quality ordinance. So the rationale for this is NOx emissions are a byproduct of burning fossil fuels. So by essentially banning NOx emissions, you'd essentially ban the burning of fossil fuels. There's obviously health benefits associated to that. So that's why a number of New York and Los Altos have adopted these types of standards. Specifically, Los Altos did it for space and water heating. And there is a lot of movement in this space. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, Rule 9, has set NOx standards in 2027 for water heating and in 2029 for space heating. The CARB, the California Air Resource Board, is planning on a statewide NOx standard for appliances. And then the South Coast Air Quality Management District is proposing an incentive program to encourage the early transition to zero emission appliances. Thing about this, potentially this standard, is the city has the authority to implement local control measures to improve air quality in the region. This is the basis for them to be able to go ahead and do this. The pros of this approach, would that be, again, there'd be a complete gas ban minus potential exemptions. This would potentially, this would be EPCa compliant, and it was supported by the South Coast Air Quality Management District and CARB efforts. As I said, there is, people are moving in this space. Again, it is untested legally, so it would be a risk. So our recommendation is that this is something that should be researched by city staff as a potential way to reduce gas piping in new construction. Option three, this is the option that has been pursued and adopted by many cities in California that did have an all-electric reach code. This option is a way to encourage the construction of all-electric buildings by making it slightly harder or slightly more onerous to construct buildings with gas infrastructure. So again, similar to our reach code, cities in California can adopt local amendments to the energy code. Cities can stop more stringent requirements under the source energy rating, so the EDR-1 for single-family, and the source energy score for multifamily, low and high and non-residential. So source energy is the total energy from production, distribution, transmission loss, to use in the building. Again, the format of such a code will, that all-electric buildings meet a much lower source energy rating than mixed-fuel buildings. The EDR score can be reduced to a level where gas buildings must complete additional, yeah, this is important, but cost-effective energy efficiency actions, such as solar arrays, batteries, et cetera, et cetera. This effectively increases the cost of building with gas compared to all-electric. Again, this approach may not work for all building types depending on climate zone cost and effective results. So this is important. So we have requested three cost-effective studies. One cost-effective study is for single-family housing, one cost-effective study for low-rise and high-rise multifamily housing, and then another cost-effective study for non-residential housing. We have two of those cost-effective studies in. We're waiting for the non-residential cost-effective study to come in, and I'll say why that's important in a minute. Next slide, please. So in a memo like this, so this is based on San Luis Obispo, who has a very similar single-margin source energy code, and based on their cost-effective studies, they have these performance requirements over and above the standard code. So the standard type building for single-family residential, so must exceed the standard EDR-1 requirement by at least six points. For multifamily low-rise, that is exceed the standard source energy requirement by 6%, for multifamily by 3%, and non-residential by 7%. So these points and these percentage, compliance percentages are what are defined by the cost-effective studies. The cost-effective studies will give a range that, within this range, it is cost-effective for you to request the building to be more efficient. So that's where these numbers come from. So again, that is the numbers that we are waiting for in order for us to identify which buildings such a code could pertain to in Glendale. And we do know fast-service restaurants, such a code could not work in Glendale under the current cost-effective studies due to our climate zone and the cost of energy. So here's an example. So for the high performance for all-electric home, maybe I'd achieve these high-performance standards with a heat pump, hot water heat pump, heat pump for space heater, and the prescriptive efficiency measures that are in the baseline code, and potentially additional solar and additional efficiency measures or high-efficiency appliances. You can't dictate high-efficiency appliances. The builder may just wish to do that. So for a mixed-fuel home, as you can see, it'll be taking a lot more effort and cost for them to meet the requirements of the code. Up to, can cost up to $7,000 more to construct a single-family home to meet these requirements. So again, by adopting such a code, it is making the all-electric-based code much more feasible for builders to build. It's much more cheaper for them to do that. Next slide. Again, the pros from this, it'd be EPCa compliant. There's a well-established and low legal risk. This has been done by many jurisdictions in California. Again, the cons are that gas can still be installed in new construction. There's the potential for stranded assets. So what they mean by that is, as we move away from gas to electrification, less and less people are going to be supporting the gas infrastructure, so it's going to cost more for them. It is slightly difficult to do the modeling and show compliance, but there is the modeling software out there that architects and engineers can use to meet those performance standards. In the report, there were also options for existing buildings. Just a couple of points here. So whatever option we choose for new construction, we'd recommend that that option may be used for existing buildings. So you wouldn't need to do a whole different reach code for existing buildings. You just say, this is what we're using for new construction. We could potentially pick that up for existing buildings. So the California Green Building Code gets updated every three years. We've already just gone through the mid-cycle update for the 2022 code. The 2025 code is in development right now, which will take effect in January 2026. We're also looking at different approaches, such as developing building performance standards, which would affect existing buildings. So maybe the idea would be to develop such this code, this, the single-margin source energy code for new construction, and then wait for the cycle update of the California Green Code to pick up existing buildings, and probably have a suite of measures, looking at buildings' performance standards, that would also look at existing buildings. So those are some of the options that are available, and also give us time to research a NOx emissions-type standard, too, if that is something that we wanted to pursue. So with that, I can try and answer any questions you may have.
David, there's a couple other items under the existing building electrification options in the memo. Are we going to discuss those at all?
No, because whatever we, recommendation you make for the new construction, we'll use for existing buildings.
Okay, okay. So what it sounds like is we're choosing between effectively the status quo, an all-out ban, and then a more nuanced approach with these, yeah, sorry, it is getting late. These, the nuanced approach, the single-margin source energy code. Can you, can you define what that means, that, what single margin means in this context?
So the single-source energy margin is a residential energy performance standard that can apply to both mixed-fuel and all-electric buildings. The energy source metric is expressed as the Energy Design Rating 1 for single-family buildings, or the source energy budget for multifamily buildings. The Energy Design 1 standard is effectively based on the prescriptive requirements in the current energy code. So, so above that, six points would be the current energy code plus six additional points stricter, to make sure that the building is more efficient. So you compare the standard EDR-1 building with your proposed EDR-1 building. The proposed EDR-1 building can be as strict as the current EDR-1 standard, but it can't be less strict, it can be more strict than the current EDR-1 standard. So the proposed design must be equal to less than, uses less energy than the standard EDR-1 building.
Thoughts from the Commission?
David, you said that we received two studies already.
Correct.
And we're waiting for one.
What's the timeline on that, one that's pending?
It should have been in last week, but they had some issues with the software. So as you know, it's the Local Energy Codes teams that provide those cost-effective studies for us. So we have to provide them specific Glendale water and power data in order for them to do that cost-effective studies. So it should be, we've got a call with the Local Energy Codes team on Wednesday.
Okay.
So to find out where it is.
Sometime in the next few weeks.
Yeah, this Wednesday.
Okay.
Well, I think the building codes are moving in that direction anyway, like the new, you know, ASHRAE 100 requirements for existing buildings will be, or has set performance goals and so on, and the codes always pick up the, you know, these types of ASHRAE standards. You know, they're code-ready and so on. So, you know, rather than them developing their own, many of them just cite the ASHRAE standards. So I think some of it is, like, it's already coming down the road. So if we stick our necks out and maybe get sued or something, it's, it's, you know, why risk it? But, and then the, I'm a little bit concerned about some of the, like, resilience for the, our infrastructure, too, if everyone's going all-electric all at once and putting a lot of electric cars online, and, you know, while the city is still rebuilding their power plant, and I'm just, like, worried, like, you know, I'm not going to be able to keep the lights on at some point. So, you know, a Level 2 charger takes as much, you know, electrical demand as a house, you know, a single-family home. And so, so that, you know, if, if we're successful in getting a lot more EV drivers out there on the road, it's, it's going to put a strain on that. And so at least this would buy us a little more time to sort all that out and let some of these systems come online, you know, at the Grayson Power Plant and so on, too. So, and give people more options and time to be thinking about transition and how it's going to affect them as homeowners.
David, to that point, I mean, with the, with the previous or now modified ordinance that has the electrification portion removed, I mean, do we have any numbers on how many kind of homes or permits? You know, we were, I guess, how many homes were asking for gas infrastructure, and we said no?
So nobody answered an exception from the ordinance when it was in place. I do have the number, I forgot to bring that information with me today, but it was mainly ADUs that were constructed under the Building Electrification Ordinance, and I think it was maybe two, three larger buildings, and I don't know how many single-family houses, but it was not a huge amount.
So I guess I would say that, with that in mind, I mean, to me, it feels like there's not as much of a large surge that might come from this. I understand that concern that, you know, we are potentially going to face some resilience, but to me, it feels like this, we're really kind of working with small numbers here. So I would ask, I just, I would wonder, you know, why, why we wouldn't take the approach of basically replacing the, the all-electric reach code and all-electric ordinance with, with another one that's serving the same purpose? I mean, I know there's, there's some, some risk to this, this NOx ban, I think is what the strategy would be, but to me, if it's, if it's EPCa compliant, according to, granted, it's, it's the consultant, but if, you know, if they're claiming it to be EPCa compliant... to be EPCA compliant, it's supported by the South Coast Air Quality Management District, CARB efforts, you know, I just don't see why we would want to step, take a step back when, you know, we, we could be right there with, with these other cities that are, that are kind of on the forefront and, you know, taking a stand and, and really standing up for, and not showing that, like, oh, okay, you know, we'll be, you know, we'll be cowed by the industry. Because I would love to see us continue to support, I guess is what I'm saying, is to continue to support an all-electric ordinance here in the city.
Yeah, I wonder, is it feasible to just do both options two and three, in case option two, the air quality ordinance gets struck down? We always have three at the very
So with option three, that would be a lot quicker process for staff to develop the ordinance, bring the ordinance to city council, send the ordinance through the process that it will have to go to. So it has to go to the California Energy Commission and the Building Standards Commission, and then become enforceable. With the NOx emissions approach, again, staff would have to do a lot more research on that. I'm not saying we can't do that, I'm presenting those options to city council. So if you'd like us to do that and present those different options to city council, we can do that. But it depends if city council says, okay, we won't need to pursue potentially a NOx emissions approach. Again, very few cities do it, so we'd have to do a lot more research on what that ordinance would actually look like, how it'll be implemented. And so that would probably take a little longer. And I don't know, again, as the California Energy Code's changing, I don't know what the changes are to the current California Energy Codes. We'd have to look at those and then see where they would match any of these potential future ordinance. Also, if we're going to do a building performance standard approach, too, any of the ordinances that we do now, we'd have to keep an eye on how they would integrate with the potential building performance standards programs that we're thinking of looking at, too. So, I mean, yeah, there's, there's no reason we can't look at both. Long answer to that.
So David, by that same logic, you know, while we wait for, you know, a full research to be done on option two, the NOx standard, we can implement
Correct.
option three and give us enough runway for a full research and maybe legal review to see if we're going to be, you know, challenged, or hopefully by that time, it lets some other city go forward ahead of us and see if the standard works for them. But let's not waste time, you know, while we wait for a full research or legal review, and adopt an option, you know, that's not perfect, but it's better than what we have, option three, and wait for a full research in the next few months, hopefully not a year.
Yeah, I mean, that makes perfect sense.
That, that would be the option that I would recommend, you know, waiting for the perfect option. You know, we can't waste the time. Let's, let's move forward what we have.
An understanding. So we'll potentially draft such an ordinance, get it through the process and everything, then start January next year, go through, working on potentially another ordinance. Because every time the California Energy Code updates, you have to update your reach code. So you don't put your reach code in once. So it's going to have, have to be updated in 2025 anyway, whatever we choose.
Yeah, because I would really love air quality ordinance. I always like breathing clean air, personally. And I don't think it really says it here, because NOx itself is, it's, nitrogen oxides are by themselves, like, a contaminant, but they also produce, like, tropospheric ozone, like, ground-level ozone, which, again, is another problem, carcinogenic and all sorts of things. So, yeah, breathing cleaner air, always good, always love that.
I, I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to think through the pros and cons of each, obviously. David, to your last point about 2025, so is that your way of saying, like, no matter which option we go through, this policy approach will be adopted in 2025 because we would want to coincide with the?
The one thing is whatever we choose to do today, tomorrow. Sorry. Whatever we choose to do, whether it's to do a NOx emissions standard, I don't know, or go through this, option three, thank you. As the California Energy Code gets updated for 2026, we're going to have to update the reach code. Whatever it is we do, it's going to have to be updated. So I just wanted to make that point.
Sure, sure, okay. Okay, and then I, I do want to understand the, the, whether or not there's a difference between option two and option three from a, I guess, legal point of view. I, I thought I saw one as an ordinance, perhaps, and one maybe an amendment, perhaps. Can you clarify that piece? And then I, I'd like to, the reason I'm asking is I'd like to understand the timeline and the implications of pursuing one or the other, if you could, if it matters timeline-wise or adoption-wise?
Commissioner Barthusuf, it would be by ordinance, either one would be by ordinance. So I think the, the timeline is being driven by the research. So we could draft and bring the ordinance on option three much more rapidly than we could. And in either case, as David said, we'd be reviewing them and revising them and updating them within the next year regardless. And we're also hopeful that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District rules will be evolving and are about to be adopted, is my understanding, on the NOx standards. So that's something that we can take a look at as part of our research. Obviously, staff is, or maybe it isn't obvious, staff is interested in, in replacing the component of our ordinance that was preempted under EPCA. So whatever is most efficient to do that, and, you know, so we're following multiple tracks at the same time. Legally, from, with regard to either approach that you take, we still have to draft the ordinance and bring it forward. Quicker on option three.
Got it. And I guess, I, I did hear the explanation for the timeline. I, I think it was specific to option three, but other than saying we, we need to do research, I guess I think to myself, option two, there is a precedent. Was it San Luis Obispo?
Los Altos.
Oh, Los Altos. So if there is precedent, I guess, can you further elaborate on what that additional research, like, why we, why option two would take longer than option three?
Because option three, we have the institutional knowledge of how that works. There's plenty of model ordinances out there that we can easily adopt and easily write with the NOx emissions. There's only the one, Los Altos. So we don't know what that encompasses in its entirety. So just, for due diligence, it'll just require us to do a lot more research into that.
If I might add, it appears that Los Altos Hills ordinance, the zero NOx requirement, is just for space and water heating at this moment in time. So it's not as comprehensive as option three. And if you read the Rincon Report, there also is a similar, there's a challenge in New York State in federal court. So that's why this is, well, it is tested. There is some risk out there. We're not really sure whether or not an ordinance that we develop based on best available knowledge will withstand a challenge. And, depending on what happens in that case, and I don't know the status of it off the top, that could impact our ability to implement under option two. Whereas, as David indicated, we have some great examples out there right now that we could model our own ordinance after, for option three, and get that adopted and implemented.
Would you turn around on option three, drafting an ordinance and bringing it to the commission?
We are going to city council on July 30th to get their direction. So maybe two months after, two to three months after that, it'll be ready.
With option three, it does show that there is somewhat of a caveat as well, saying that buildings can be built using electric space and water heating, but still use gas for cooking.
Right.
But that's just based on kind of the, the, the number we determine, right, for the building performance, or the, that's the, whatever the metric is, performance metric, yeah.
So you can't go above what is cost-effective, because that preempts federal standards.
I see, okay.
That's why the cost-effective studies, that's the crucial bit of information to set the performance metric.
Mm-hmm. So from the, the, I mean, is Rincon in this report referring to those cost-effective measures when they say that? Or could it be different based on the cost-effective measures we have coming back?
Could what be different?
Like, could this, this statement they have in here saying that it leaves the door open for gas for cooking?
Well, yeah, because it would be, in essence, electric preferred. We can't state, we can't state that it's all electric.
But I'm saying that if we have a cost-effective study coming back for, for single-family homes, whatever, could that be showing in the, in that study that it's not cost-effective to do any of this, including for cooking?
Potentially.
Just, we just need to see what that, okay. So this report, this memo from Rincon doesn't refer to that cost-effective study that we have?
Right.
Okay, well, if anyone wants to make a motion?
I have one more clarifying question, if you don't mind. The, you, you had mentioned that whatever we recommend would apply to existing
It'd apply to new construction.
Right. But I, I thought that you had mentioned as part of your presentation that whatever we recommend would also-
Could potentially be used for existing buildings. So
Okay.
The current reach code is for new construction only, not existing buildings. And the reason for that is a lot of GWP considerations. Do they have the capabilities, transmission capabilities and everything for existing buildings, as Commissioner Warner said, to be picked up under such an ordinance? So our assumption is that we would make the recommendation to city council that the ordinance to replace the building electrification code would be for new construction at this point in time. With the understanding that we are looking at these other measures, such as building performance standards, et cetera, et cetera, which would pick up existing buildings, commercial, we have to, we haven't figured out what building performance standards would look like, but that is something that we're looking to develop. So, but we would be making the recommendation that the replacement is for new construction.
One other question, sorry, I know I stepped out for that, but we need to consider, or as a part of this, for existing, existing buildings, isn't there a consideration of what's kind of the threshold for a remodel that would necessitate? And is that 50%?
So we do have that threshold
Yeah.
in our code. It is 50%, right about there.
50%, that's right, 50% or more, okay.
In terms of increased square footage, or?
I believe so, I'm not exactly sure. But I know that within the code, there is a major remodel threshold, which we'll potentially use for this.
So that's an already-defined term that we use for other things? Okay, thanks.
And it's, it's 50% of the square footage of the home that's being renovated, or it's, it's your?
I'm not exactly sure of the exact wording, I apologize.
Okay, okay. Okay. Well, I, I know we have a motion, David, I have it here, I think it's-
Do you have any callers? I thought you-
Yeah, thank you. Please, Nora, do we have anyone that's public, wants to make public comment?
We have no callers on the line.
Thank you, thank you. Okay.
Can we, you know, I'm used to us asking clarifying questions, getting more information, and then we go into some kind of discussion. And I feel like we've kind of sprinkled some of our opinions, but we haven't quite discussed. Can we allow for that, just for the sake of, because I, I'm personally, like, I'm trying to figure out the pros and cons, and I'd like to hear from colleagues before I make a decision. Because for me, if, if this is going to be the segue into that, like, I like the straightforwardness of option two. And I'm a little bit discouraged by option three, because I get the sense that, like, somebody can just buy their way out of a requirement and continue to NOx our community, NOx our community. If they, if they really want that gas stove or that, that gas-water heater, they can just buy their way out of this requirement. So that's, I, I'm a little bit torn. I'm getting the sense that timeline-wise, on which we can get done quicker, option three seems more appealing. So I'm, I'm thinking that through, like, what can we get done quicker? What is the most effective, and what is the most equitable?
I'm exactly the same place you are. It appeals to me to regulate air quality and to tell particular industry group that they have no right to intervene in something as important as that. And what's interesting, I've read a couple of articles on the case with Berkeley, and it sounds like there were very strong dissent. And they did, they amended their decision, and there were very strong dissents filed. So it'd be interesting if it gets revisited. I don't know, though, if it's, if the, if the Ninth Circuit rejected reconsidering it, they may not be able to take it. Yeah. So I don't know what that means. I mean, and I don't want the city getting in a fight over setting an air quality standard.
Final.
Yeah, but I wish, right, but I wish somebody would. But I agree, number three seems the easiest.
For me, expediency. If it's going to go to council in July, August or September, this commission can review it, you know, move it forward. The NOx standard is more appealing, and I think we should still, on a separate track, move forward on that. But by the time new standards come out, by the time we get the research done realistically, it's probably going to be February or March even. So baby steps is better than no step. That's my logic, that's where I'm coming from. Let's move forward with option three, and hear it in August and September. Yeah, we might have to, you know, draft a new ordinance and revisit it early next year, but so be it. Because the other option is we do nothing and we wait for the perfection next year.
I mean, I said it already, kind of, but I would propose moving forward on option three fully right now, and then putting it on the docket for option two in two or three months, or whenever the research comes in for that.
David, would you mind reading option three again? Because we've been saying, you know, they're not actually numbered that way, and make sure we all realize exactly what we're voting on here. Okay. In the report, it wasn't numbered, but, okay.
So what we're talking about is the single-
Uh, Mike.
What we're talking about is the single-margin source energy code amendment to the California Building Code. So that would set a performance standard metrics for all buildings types. And what that effectively mean, it would be incentivize builders to develop an all-electric building, because the requirements to do that would be less onerous than having to meet the performance requirements if you're going to have natural gas in your building, in a nutshell. a nutshell.
I was thinking it was number two that was reducing the threshold to the point that it would be very expensive to not go all-electric. So now, now I'm even more confused, so.
Number two is just, just- Yeah.
Pardon me?
Strictly air standard.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, just the air quality, yeah.
And obviously, equipment that's powered with fossil fuel is gonna have NOx, higher NOx, and equipment that's all-electric is gonna have no NOx. So score is higher, but the, the measuring stick that we're using is clean air, NOx.
Yeah, that's option two.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to move forward with option three. And, and staff can start the research and draft ordinance. But at the same time, I want us to still continue with the research and the necessary drafting that's needed for an option two. So move forward with option three now, and at the same time, continue the research and the legwork that's needed for option two.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Bartrusov.
Yes.
Commissioner Warner.
Yes.
Commissioner Pinkerton.
Yes.
Vaisha Kartunian.
Yes.
Chairperson Bazemore.
Yes.
All right, well, what is next?
Next item is six reports and information, six A environmental preferable purchasing.
And David, before we continue with this, just given the late hour, is there, do you know, how, how long would this item take for you to present on?
So Chairperson Bazemore, this is just an information report. So the commission requested what the city does environmental purchasing regarding particular product categories. So we provided that information in this report. So it'll be, do you want me to go through and read through all the different, I mean, it's just, unless the commissioners have read that, have any specific questions on the report or any actions they want us to address?
Yeah, so there's, go ahead.
Can I pose, I don't know what our next commission meeting agenda entails, but perhaps if it's a light agenda meeting, we can postpone this item to the next, to the next meeting?
So that would work.
I'll second that, if necessary.
It would have to be notice as part of the special meeting, as Mr. Jones indicated, it would be July 8th, I believe, which is another Monday.
Yeah, yeah. Great, well, let's, let's do that. I know, I know originally this was intended to be just the cap evening, and then we had the building electrification ordinance got added in. So that makes sense that I think we're having to push something off the table here. So with that being the case, what is next?
Next is seven sustainability office updates.
We have no updates at this time.
Okay, great. Next item, please.
Next is adjournments. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Are, are there any public comments at the end or no?
There are. There are currently no callers on the line.
Okay, so we had a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned at 9:25.
Thank you.